Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 PM and the April 8th City Council meeting will come to order. And now for the invocation. Our Father in Heaven, as we come together for the Bel Air Beach City Council meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. May the decisions we make not only serve our community, but also be pleasing in your eyes. Help us to approach our decisions with empathy, communicate with honesty, and act with integrity. We seek blessings for everyone here and for all members of our Bel Air Beach community. Lead us towards choices that ensure safety, health, and happiness for all, and inspire us to protect the natural beauty of our city for future generations. In our work, let us remember the importance of unity and collaboration. May our efforts reflect our commitment to the well-being of our city and be a testament to our desire to honor your will. Amen. Now please rise and join me in my closing prayers. My closing prayers to the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. For His people, for His citizens, for all of us. Ms. Rhodes, would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. All right, the first item on the agenda is swearing-in of public officials. Now, councilmembers Bankard and Elliott, please join. Well, Elliott can't, but please join City Attorney Mora below to be sworn in.
Member Shaw Elliott, I'll do Mr. Bankard swearing-in first and then yours, so we don't have the feedback and reverb. We'll do them one at a time, all right?
Very good.
You raise your hand. I state your name. I, Frank Bankard, do solemnly swear that I will support, honor, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State and under the Charter of the City of Bel Air Beach, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of councilmember on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations, Councilmember. And member Shaw Elliott, if you could stand and raise your right hand.
Yes, sir. And for the record, I wanted to say also that I did do this personally before I left town.
Understood. I state your name.
I, Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Do solemnly swear.
I'm sorry?
Do solemnly swear.
S- solemnly swear.
That I will support, honor, protect, and defend.
That I will support, honor, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government of the United States
the Constitution and government of the United States
and of the State of Florida.
and of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
that I am duly qualified to hold office.
under the Constitution of the State
under the Constitution of the State
and under the Charter of the City of Bel Air Beach.
and under the Charter of the City of Bel Air Beach.
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of councilmember.
the duties of councilmember.
on which I am now about to enter.
which I am now about to enter.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Councilmember.
All right, now we're on to item two, which is approval of rest of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion, which was made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Can you vote? All right, the agenda is approved. Right now, we're up to item number three, which is citizen comments. If any citizens would like to address the council topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait for me to call it on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to council. If any council members would like to respond to the citizen comments, please hold your responses until we reach the council comments. If the city manager or city attorney would like to respond, I ask that you hold your comments until we get to your designated report times. Would any citizen like to address the council about a topic already on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the podium and give your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Iris Maluka. I'm the resident of the 110 First Street, Bel Air Beach since 2016. We used to live in Virginia. A retired lieutenant for Air Force. Served for US Army and Air Force in Italy, Greece, and Albania. My husband is an active member. I have two girls. We moved from Virginia last year because this house used to be our vacation house. And we, since we both, I'm a businesswoman as well, an entrepreneur in real estate. So I have a lot of real estate properties and business embargo. So I employ more than 10 employees every month I have to pay them, which is good for the city to grow their revenue and is better for the town. So we decided, with my husband still commuting, I'm going to be moving here. Worked for Pinellas County Public School last year as a language arts teacher in Old Redon in Palm Harbor. And I have two teenagers, 17 and 15. And Marcy, which is my youngest one, all A students, a freshman in medical team at PHU. She's going to have her ride if you don't mind after I finish as well. So why I'm here today? First of all, I know it's only three minutes. I'm going to, I hope I'm going to get everything together, but it's, um, there is a situation with my property. My property, the only property got flooded in August last year, and I reported that. But I got punished for that because I reported to Mr. Kyle and his attorney their real numbers. And I got punished for that because I overhated 50% of the FEMA regulation, and it's only $14,000 difference. Not only that, the story starts here. Since December, I don't have a house. I got a denied letter telling me I need to demo that everything that I've done and raise the property up. So my question to the city manager and his attorney, I understand they are referring to FEMA regulations, but the FEMA regulation has unit A, substantial impairment and substantial damage. They are exceptional because my daughter over there is suffering from mold, is suffering from the illnesses. And this city manager over there never cared to come and see the conditions.
I'm going to have to interrupt you. You are not allowed to point at a particular.
Okay, that's fine. Because you made me last month to not speak about that. And I don't have a house. You certainly have a house, correct? You have your kids under the roof. I don't have a house right now. So I need you to understand because we start this meeting with a prayer to God, but I don't think so we're talking about God here. We are not caring about our citizen. I pay taxes on time. I'm an entrepreneur. I have opened several businesses from Virginia over here. So why I have to be treated differently? Did the city manager came to see this condition of the houses? Never, never. I just got a denied letter. So now what I'm doing is, of course, I'm going to apply with a compliance, get the drawings, and I want hopefully this city manager to approve my, the new house. When I'm going to get there, I don't know. There are a lot to tell. The governor is involved, the house representative is involved. I'm here today because Mr. Nadvalla told me to come and complain, which Mr. Nadvalla is a commissioner of Pinellas County. And the last resource will be the social media. Thank you. I know I passed my term, I apologize, but I'm a mom, I'm very irritated, and I just, it's just, in my opinion, it's completely unethical. It's not a human being to, 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 to lead the family without a house in the street. It's just unbelievable. Thank you.
Would any other citizen like to comment here at this time? Yes, sir. I said there's three minutes. There's going to be 12 minutes because I've got three people who are going to give me three minutes each. Raise your hands, please. Rick Shock, Yoli Rdero, Bob Angelo. 12 minutes, Madam Clark, please.
I don't know how to make this good.
Don't have it. I can only do 12. That's the max, but thank you. Okay, I've got it. You want me to turn it?
I can do it.
Okay. I'm starting. Good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've been here. Excuse me, can you give us your name and address? Joseph Manzo, Bel Air Beach, 7th Street, former mayor. You all know me. So, it's been a while since I've been here, August of 2022. Some of you have heard that I had some medical issues, but I'm standing in front of you. I'm healthy and I feel good. And I thank some of you for the prayers you offered. Really appreciate that. So why am I here? I'm here because I was at Bel Air Shore a little while ago. This letter addressed to Randall Mora, dated March 21st, 2024. How many of you have it? Oh, you don't show me your hands. I'll bet none of you have it. Why don't you have it? I want to know. I sat at their meeting, and they said that they held this letter, and Mr. Mora knew about it until after our election because they didn't want that to interfere with the results of the election. Let's unpack that for a second. Bel Air Shore told our city attorney about a letter, and it was kept secret from the citizens, from the voters, from potential people who might want to run for office. Were you afraid I was going to come back? I'm not coming back because there's many, many ways I can deal with stuff like this. What's in that letter? Well, the first thing that's in that letter, and I'm going to go in backward order here, they take issue with our city manager because accidentally he issued a pass, a parking pass to one of the parking lots, to someone who's not a Bel Air Beach resident. He can't do that. His predecessor gave him a lot. I got him. But worse than that, you talk about the pot calling the kettle black. These are the same people who right now fill up 6th Street Lot with construction workers, who filled up lot after lot with personal business. Parties, open houses, auctions. One of my favorites, they decided that NFL Films could use two of our parking lots. And what did this city do? Not a damn thing. We did nothing. They have no right to use those lots at all. It's in their fortunesses. And Fred Riley, when I was mayor, wrote a letter to them explaining that. And they deemed that letter not worthy of a response. And they have the nerve to jump on Kyle here because he issued one parking pass. Please don't do it again. But when they can park 60-ton construction cranes in a handicap spot for two or three days, and don't give a damn about the people with disabilities, I find it hard to get behind this letter. But it's even worse. What they seek in this letter, and I think why they kept this a big secret, they want $23,075 for legal fees for Regina Kardashian. That's their city attorney. For the work she did on my lawsuit against them. And on top of that, they got a $40,000 increase in their property insurance or their liability insurance. Well, boo hoo. They had the opportunity on July 21st, 2020, when I walked across the street. Actually, it was virtual, we had COVID at the time. And I gave them the opportunity. Give us back the umbrellas, no lawsuit. They said no. Then they got sued. And despite the lies that were told by people in this city, there was no deal in the offing. That was complete nonsense. And some of you perpetrated that lie. No, look, there was no deal. And I've got Robert Schmidt, their former mayor, and Steve Lue, their former vice mayor, who's now their mayor, under oath, on deposition, saying there was no deal. You lied to the citizens. Congratulations. Maybe it helped you get elected, but it didn't help support our cause. And I warned you that if you didn't support these beach rights, they were going to come and take more of them. Now let's talk about these requests for money. Regina Kardashian's bill. Regina Kardashian did not put in appearance in that case. So don't spin it and don't give me any garbage because I was there, it was my case. Regina Kardashian never put in appearance. She came to a deposition, she opened her mouth, and I jumped down it because she had no right to speak. They had not one, but two very competent attorneys, Tom Skerritt and Martin Champagne. They were paid for by Florida League Cities. They didn't need Regina Kardashian. And if they chose to have her, you shouldn't be paying for it. The only other thing Regina did was prosecute a action against Peter Rdero and Bob Angelo, who's in attendance tonight, for having an umbrella on the beach. The first people in the country to get a summons for that. Well, I defended him that both of them, and both of those cases were dismissed. And you don't pay for them to go and prosecute cases. That takes care of Regina. Now let's talk about insurance. Their insurance went up. Well, when Frank Bankard asked the city manager here about our insurance going up, he was told that prices went up, they should have. Hey, welcome to Bidenomics. Prices are up on everything, insurance included. But undoubtedly, some of it is due to this lawsuit. But understand the lawsuit from any of you who didn't bother to read it. It's not just about the beach rights because of the umbrella. It dealt with their mismanagement of the lots as trustee. It dealt with the toxic trust doctrine, which is the wet sand that everyone in Florida is entitled to. Dealt with a lot of things. And if they are paying extra insurance because of what I will say is their reluctance to do the right thing, then that's too bad. You don't pay for it. They're holding up the inter-local agreement. What I said as a mayor was one of the worst agreements I had ever seen, signed by Mike Kelly, negotiated by that group back then. And it's a terrible agreement, and it's vague as to whether we owe them or not owe them. But I seem to think that our city didn't agree to pay for people to violate constitutional rights and put babies out in the sun so they can get skin cancer. And for those of you who think skin cancer is a game, come to Moffett with me one Thursday. We'll talk to some of the patients, and we'll see what a game it is. This city didn't support me at all. Dave Gaddis went and made a motion, a resolution that the city wasn't involved. That's the support we got. And I warned you, they weren't going to stop. So now, I'll tell you what's not in your letter. Kardashian said basically, we'll opt out of the inter-local agreement. For some of the people in this city, you think that that may mean you don't have beach rights. Rest assured, I know what the law is. We have deemed perpetual beach rights. They can burn the inter-local agreement, and we're still allowed to go to the beach. The inter-local agreement deals with how the lots are managed. Basically says Bel Air Beach is going to maintain them, issue parking passes, and I believe we're responsible, we were responsible for patrol. Well, they hit, they got something here. And they've been talking about this for a long time, by the way. They were talking about this when I was mayor. Difference is I let my council know about it. What are they talking about doing? Talking about acting out of that inter-local agreement. They're talking about cutting off your parking so you won't be able to park there anymore. So in other words, pay them their money, or we cut off your parking. I live 150 feet from the beach. I could give a damn if they cut off the parking personally. Don't look for me to fight it for you. We have plenty of lawyers and wannabe lawyers in this city who knew everything about this. So get ready to fight it yourself. But here's my problem. If you send them this money, okay? We're not in a position where this is the end of this. This insurance bill has went up permanently, it's not going down. And there may very well be more litigation. I'm not too thrilled with their new law. And there's a bunch of citizens, some of whom have retained me, that are not that thrilled about it. So if you're going to pay for this, you're going to be paying for a lot more. I'm going to tell you the words when I brought this up with our former city attorney, Fred Riley. Fred Riley looked at it, he heard what I had to say, and he said, hell no. That's what you have to do, folks. You need to go back to Bel Air Beach, the people that you told you loved, the people that want to trample our beach rights. And you need to tell them, hell no. We're not paying this. And you want to opt out of the inter-local agreement? Good. You maintain lots, and you do everything else. And if it means they shut off parking, then maybe somebody will defend that. Maybe they can do it, and maybe they can't do it. This is never going to end. And I'm getting sick and tired of coming here and begging this council. So you look at this and you say, we'll do whatever we want. That's what I heard last time. We want the election, we'll do whatever you want. Well, just remember, I can do whatever I want to. I urge you to tell them not just no, you tell them, hell no. Thank you. Would any other citizens like to comment? Did I see a hand go up? Yes.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Tammy Lavenda, 97, Harper Drive. I have been a resident of Bel Air Beach since 2017, and I'm the chairperson of the Bel Air Beach Community Foundation. The foundation was formed in 2022 to do good work, sociales, and special projects in our city. We find none more special or necessary than a memorial to thank and commemorate our veterans. To some of you, this may be an update, and to others, this may be new information. Our goal is to raise a total of $15,000 for the Bel Air Beach Veterans Memorial at Crossman Park. All donations are tax deductible. There will be a new four-by-six-foot sign, which is on the screens, new landscaping, four new metal benches, a flagpole with both the American and a veteran's flag, and potentially a fountain. There will also be a limited number of dedicated veterans memorial bricks for sale as part of the fountain platform. More details to come on our website. We already have had the funds donated for the four dedicated benches and the dedicated flagpole. The foundation is still raising money for the sign, the landscaping, and the fountain. We are trying to get the word out to as many people as possible. So if you know someone who may be interested in donating to this worldwide project, please pass along the information. The foundation does accept cash, check, or credit card. I'm sorry, not cash, but check or credit card donations on our website. We appreciate and thank those who have donated so far, and we look forward to this memorial being a success. Our goal is to raise all funds by this July, and we will have General Charles Whittingham will be doing the dedication and ribbon-cutting ceremony, Veterans Day weekend of 2024. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact either myself or anyone on the foundation board, or you can go to our website, Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Yes, I can't see you, but please come up.
Hi, my name is Marcy Maluka, and the address is 110 First Street. And I'm daughter of Iris Maluka. I just came up here a few people ago. And I was just here to share my thoughts. We moved here around two years ago from Virginia, and we were living in 110 First Street. And I would wake up with runny nose every single day, a sore throat every day. I could barely get out of bed. It felt like my muscles wouldn't work. I just had terrible pain all over my body. And I would get sick every few weeks with a sinus infection, and I wouldn't go to school because I couldn't get out of bed. So I missed so much school. And we were trying to figure out why, so we took a test. And the test found out that I was very allergic to mold. So we did a mold analysis on the house, and it was very dangerous. So we couldn't live there. And then, um, so that was a big reason that we had to renovate. And then the hurricane came, so that flooded the house as well. And there was no other option because I made it even worse with the mold. And I haven't had a stable place to live since August. I've been moving house to house every month, even a few times a month. There was a period where I moved four times in one month because I haven't had a stable household to stay at. And I just, I just want my house back because you guys have a home to go back to, and I don't. And it's hurting my studies because I'm at Palm Harbor University, and I'm studying medicine. And it's a lot to study, and I have to stay focused and try my best. And it's taking up my time because all my stuff isn't even out of boxes. Most of my clothes are in boxes. I also have a dog, so we have to move with the dog as well. And me and my sister were just packing, unpacking, packing, unpacking, same thing over and over again. And I just, I just need a house to be done and to go forward with the renovations so that I can actually have a stable house to live in and focus on my school like I'm supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? All right, citizen comments are now closed. All right, we're up to item number four, which is a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with a monthly law enforcement report from the corporal units.
Counsel, I apologize that the corporal had to step out for a stabbing that's turning into a homicide. So I forgive, please forgive him for that. Statistically, I can only go with what I was able to populate, or that was passed along to me, for calls for service as the actual, calls for service were not complete at this time, just earlier this meeting. In the city last month between March 1st and April 1st, there were a total of 873 calls for service. There was notably a crash of injuries on March 27th. The fire department extricated the trauma alert patient to bayfront, which closed the road for a fair amount of time. In addition to that, there were 152 traffic citations, 109 traffic warnings, 25 events reports pulled, 299 directed patrols, 60 house checks, 177 illegally parked vehicles, and 105 traffic stops, as I previously mentioned. This past month, obviously, we dealt with spring break, so there was an increased presence of traffic enforcement and also beach enforcement, beach patrols. There were no noted incidents on the beach that would have carried over. And then obviously, we increased the parking due to that disapproval. And again, I apologize for having what I have.
I understand.
Thanks.
Counsel, any questions? Yes, Mr. Bankard. Sir. You're not going to be, are code enforcement officers going to be present tonight?
I have not seen him. It'd be Deputy Trump, and I've not seen him here at all. And I don't have that report, I apologize.
Will you answer me a general question?
Sure.
When the beach is from 1st Street to 19th Street, which are Bel Air Shores, I've gotten now two complaints from residents sitting on the beach. One was lying on a towel, and was told to move by a deputy. Another one was sitting on a chair, and told to move by a deputy because they said they were, I guess, encroaching on the high-mean watermark. Where is that high-mean watermark for our residents so they know where they can sit?
To my best understanding, forgive me for not knowing the specific incidents you're talking about. It would be to that wet line, that mean-high water, so where the continuous high tide comes up to. As my understanding is from Bel Air Shore's meetings, each resident may have a difference in footage, but that is the, again, I apologize for using the word, that is the mean point in which their property line extends to.
Okay, I wasn't, I'm not a sh- I don't know exactly. I was actually dumbfounded on the first report of the chair incident. But on this incident, I looked into a little bit further. There was a two- There was a 2.8-foot tide that day. So if you go down that beach from 19th Street to First Street, when that tide comes in, some of the areas, it actually comes right up to the seaboard. So are you saying that's the wet line?
No, because that wouldn't be the mean average. Mean would be the average, so that's not the mean, just because it's high that day for a sea swell or another issue, you know, if you have a storm coming through. I did a beach patrol the other night, and I could barely get the side-by-side through the beach just by how high it was with that storm set that had come through. So it's just an average based on full data. And again, I don't want to speak to the actual numbers, but it would be the collection and the total averages that come through. They do their calculations, well, above my pay grade, of course. That's up to the surveyors and people who get paid the money for it. But they're the ones who would determine that mean-high waterline. So again, just because it's past that point at one point doesn't necessarily mean that's their, the total amount.
So it would be an average mark, and we've lost so much beach over the last five years. That's another unclear, you know what I'm saying?
I completely understand.
And the other point I want to make, it's been discussed here on the record that these are supposed to be complaint-driven, and both times, I don't think they're complaint-driven, is what I'm saying.
And again, without knowing the specific instances, I can't speak to that. Oftentimes, when the deputy's out on patrol or they're made aware of an instance, they're not going to let that person know that this is a complaint-driven matter. They may just have the information about it. They see set events, right? If I got a complaint that there's a dog on the beach or on the Beller Shore side, that there's a bicycle on the beach, I may not let somebody know, hey, listen, we received a complaint. I'm just going to address the matter with them because it would be the same enforcement type of action.
And to conclude, I think you were the deputy, I was closing the gate the one night, you were on the gator?
Probably, if it was nighttime, yep.
Thank that man right there for fixing the wheels.
I was going to say, I've noticed a stark improvement on at least two of those gates.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Elliott, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deputy. Mr. Reefer, would you mind giving the code enforcement report, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, Deputy Trump was unable to make it today, just came back from vacation. He was unaware of the rescheduling of the meeting. But just a quick overview, we're still, most of our code enforcement cases are dealing with the unpermitted remodels and other construction work without permits. But recently, with the warm weather coming in, the growing season is starting to pick up, and we've been focusing on getting the notices out for the properties with the weeds and the high grass. So so far, I think we've done about five notices of violation, and to this point, they all came into compliance. We're going to stay on that.
Counsel? Yes, Ms. Roberts?
So Kyle, on the very last page, it talks about the plant overgrowth of Struckley, which is on 107 on 21st Street. So I have seen that house before. Is there anybody living there?
Currently, there isn't anyone living there. The owner is unable to give to the residents. We do have, obviously, fines in place. We're hoping that would move things along to get the property taken care of. Right now, they're just complaining.
Is there anything, and maybe Mr. Moore doesn't call into your area. Can the city actually go in and do the cleaning and backfill that to the owner? As opposed to just letting it stay in the state of San, which is horrible?
Without knowing more of this particular property in each instance, cities do have the ability to evade certain kinds of nuisances or overgrowth and things like that. But the injury on private property is not a remedy we exercise quickly. We wish to first seek compliance through the owner, whatever property owner is at issue.
Okay. Pretty good, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Reefer, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Now we're up to item number five, which is a presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District. Is Chief Davidson here tonight?
He is not, but he was supposed to send someone in his place.
Okay, and who would that be?
No, that they showed up.
I don't see anyone. All right. Well, we will move on then. Now we're up to item six. This is a presentation concerning female lookback period. It's presented by Sean Hayden, who was a student at St. Peter'sburg College. Did he make it? Nope, there he is. How you doing, Sean?
Doing well, thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Sean Hayden. I'm a bachelor student at St. Peter'sburg College. My program is public policy administration. And for my capstone, I came to work on a pros and cons for Beller Beach's five-year lookback period. And I first want to thank Corinne Rose, Cal Reefer, and Mayor Dave Gaddis for the interviews and the help doing this project. I wouldn't be able to do it without the communication support you guys have offered. I think the first thing that I first had to discover was, what topic should I choose and why? And I found that the lookback period is a widespread issue of a lot of beach community space, especially Beller Beach, with their five-year lookback period. It's coming to discuss and understand that. And I think it was a good topic to choose timing-wise, and hopefully, it's helpful to the city. I find this topic to be important mainly because Respaning 2.0 with FEMA coming out has changed a lot of the landscape behind flood insurance and the way that people deal with the flood rules in cities. And the current codes and enforcement in Beller Beach are a little outdated. And so it's a good time to revise and look at these new understandings and reapraise what currently exists and maybe make different choices depending if they are rightless. I, when I initially did my paper, I did a survey into the residents. Over four hundred residents, and I had around 40 to 41 responses, with around 60% that wanted less of a lookback period or a lot less compared to the 17.5% who wanted more or a lot more. In between, we did those who had no indifference and liked it as it was. The lookback period specifically is officially termed a cumulative substantial improvement and is the period of time in which a substantial improvement can be held. So for five years currently, as long as you've done one project, you're on the hook for five years until that resets. The main purpose behind this lookback period is by FEMA to deter phasing. The whole reason why substantial improvement, substantial damage exists is because FEMA does not want people to phase properties by having separate projects to avoid the 50% rule. The lookback period itself is just a way to maintain those permits to prevent people from having too many permits open and put undue burden on the city. I think that the language currently that sits with substantial improvement is only within the definitions under certain subsections. So I believe that the language there needs to change and have something under the flood administration documents, which already, I do believe exists, but it doesn't have it under the exact period. It just has the language of substantial improvement or damage. So I believe that that should change. Also, based off of the way that the current CRS discounts are applied, there is not as much benefit currently to maintain a five-year lookback period for the CRS benefit. So it makes sense to reduce the current lookback period and give residents more options to improve their homes more frequently, but still to maintain some degree of, so the city's not overwhelmed by permits. The current cost of reducing the lookback period to one year seems to really be the increase in work for the city and that potential 21% of the CRS discount. But as the CRS discount is not applying as much, that is potentially less of a concern currently. So my recommendation would be that the city reduce the current lookback period to a one-year and to reevaluate their current codes for that lookback period. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Baker? First of all, can we get a copy of your report?
Yes, I will be emailing my report to the city manager after this meeting tonight, and he can district it however he wishes.
And I'm not sure if you were in the room or not when the resident got up and spoke about
Yes, substantial damage to a property.
Her catastrophe of $14,000 being told to tear her house down.
Yes, so that does not have anything to do with the city, unfortunately.
I'm not, the city is not, I'm not bringing the city into this at all. This is a payment, that 50% rule.
Yes.
A lot of people are under the assumption that, well, my house is worth a million dollars. That's not the way FEMA calculates.
No, just a fair value.
The structure of the house.
Yep.
Okay, so it only worth 200, $300,000. You have $150,000 worth of damage. Or, as you noted, the windows in last year, the year before, you put a roof point. You may have already exceeded $100,000 in repair.
Yes, oftentimes with the huge incremental improvement, people are unaware of the lookback period as it is, exactly what it is and the terms behind it. When I spoke to the city manager, he talked about the process, about there's different forms and things that present by the city to try and make that awareness more widespread. But even from my understanding, it's a complicated topic. And so I can understand from residents' viewpoint how they can confuse that. There are oftentimes improvements, or if you buy a home, it continues for ownership, where people end up with holding the bag, so to speak, where they don't have as much improvement to their property. So that can be an issue, yes.
And fortunately, this counsel, I was hoping it was going to be on this agenda, we're going to expedite at the last work session because we're redoing all our code.
Yes, sir.
We're coming into a storm season right now. So it's important that we reduce that five years to one year or even less. And I believe all the councils are agreeing with that right now. I really appreciate you looking into this. And you understand FEMA 2.0 NFIP is under suit by about 14 states right now, though.
Yeah, it is very confusing, and a lot of people are coming to discover different issues interaction with it because they, I find a lot of cities don't fully understand because, until they've gotten into the issues, they discover a problem, and they say, okay, let's work through this. And it requires a lot of effort to get to the full picture. I spent about three or four months working on my project, and even now, I still, I don't fully understand the picture. I have what best I can to represent Beller Beach and the city's opinions around it and for the topic specifically. But even speaking with the flood manager, it's not as easy and clear-cut as it is. It takes a lot of research understanding to come to a proper understanding of the topic.
And I've gone from Washington, all these underwriters are showing me these supposed discounts with this 2.0. States clearly, if you're elevation, standard, substandard grade, you're supposed to get a discount every foot over that. And no one can show anybody where those discounts apply, even the city discount.
Yes, sir. I've also heard from one of these persons interviewed, there is a FEMA document that references how over a certain amount of risk, you get diminishing returns to your CRS discount. It's in the wording under FEMA documents. So I've heard a lot of different interpretations. I heard from one source that it applies, you just don't see it. I've heard somebody say that, I've seen FEMA documents that, I've looked into the coordinator manual, into the code itself, and it's, it seems to be, and from what I can gather from the research that I've looked into, that the CRS discount is for people who are at flood risk at least and are not getting the full benefit.
Yeah, part.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Any other questions? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Have you completed the project?
Yes, I've completed the paper.
Okay, have you submitted it?
I have submitted my paper.
Did you receive a grade?
Not yet. Part of my grade is submitting to the city council. So by the end of this week, I'll be presenting to my school board, and then I will find out whether I pass, or I think they give me a week or two before I get the official grades.
Well, best of luck.
Thank you.
Sean, I'd like to thank you for coming out and speaking tonight. I'd also like to thank you for distributing the survey.
Yes, sir.
Whenever I saw it, I wasn't really sure what I was looking at. And so I started completing it, and then I stopped, and I started doing my homework. And that's whenever I realized, eh, no, not everybody's likely are. The Treasure Island doesn't even have a lookback. Indian Rocks has a one-year lookback. And then you and I met, and we both had similar questions. And eventually, I brought it back to the council and said, why are we doing this? I asked the city manager, why are we doing this? And no one really knew. And maybe in the past, it made sense, but now I agree with you 100%. I think zero lookback may not be in our best interest, but I certainly agree with one year, and I believe the rest of the council does agree also. So I would like to applaud you for your efforts and your project. And I hope we get a negative.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Elliott, before Sean leaves, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a comment, I wanted to thank Sean for his report. I look forward to reading it. And just as a reassurance to the community that because this issue has been raised, we are looking at it very seriously, and if you have any views, we welcome hearing from you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I thank the city for its time. Thank you.
All right, we are now up to the quarterly board reports. I should actually just say report because the only board that's presenting this quarter is Park Intercreation.
My name is Patty Roberts, and I live at 102 20th Street. Am I too close?
You're perfect.
No, far from that. Okay, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Tammy, who resigned from the Parson Red Board, and then the Parson Red Board chose me as the new chair. So I'm very honored to not replace her because I could never do that, but follow in her footsteps. We also have new co-chair John Wagner, our secretary is Michael Leaks, and members Debbie DeCosimo and alternate Susan Conti. So in the last several months, in October, we had some pals out here on the patio, which was very successful, lots of cute kids and even more cuter animals. So December, we had a holiday social and tree lighting out here in the lobby, which was very well-attended. January, we had a health and wellness fair. It was nice. We had about 20 to 25 vendors, but not enough people. Maybe only, I think it was about 50, 45 to 50 showed up. So we will, if you want us to continue doing this, you will need to give us better attendance. We had blood drawn in January and March. Again, not very much attendance, but it was successful in their eyes because I talked to them in March. And we are selling lots of merchandise. We have beach towels, baseball caps, goosies, water bottles. The most popular items are usually the baseball caps and the beach towels, which we have an abundance of right now, and we sold several this week, according to Renee. I'm going to dance for the yoga that's on Monday and Wednesday, and salsa classes that started, I think, about two weeks ago, and they go for six weeks. Some of the main things that are happening right now with us are our monthly beach cleanups. We just had one this Saturday, which was so successful. I think we had 12 people, was it 12, John? 12 people. And for the past three months, we've had four, maybe five. So we were really excited this past Saturday with our beach cleanup. Please continue to do that, it's the first Saturday of every month. Our parks surveys was our next big event. Between the five of us, we divided up the 18 to 20 parks or places here in our beautiful little town. And we go out with a form that has about six categories on it, and we look, look at, walk through, touch, feel, all throughout the parks, and make our recommendations or our positive comments about our parks. So we had some really, really positive comments this time because we did it a little less than a year ago, and there were several things that needed to be looked at and maybe repaired. And I'd say 90% of them have been taken care of, and the parks looked beautiful. If you haven't been to Morgan Park lately, you should go. You should go. They've done a lot of changes there, it's really pretty. Added a grill, added more trash cans, which we always Added a grill, added more trash cans, which we always need. Rearranged the benches and the picnic tables. And the biggie, they painted the bathroom. It looks really nice inside and out. Special, I call it concrete paint on the flooring that makes it look splattered. And new toilets. It just looks really nice. Excuse me. So Aaron or Mr. Glenns and his crew have been doing a fabulous job. So if you see them out on the road, please tell them thank you and that they're doing a good job. What's that? Oh, the last thing would be new ideas that we're considering. Considering now. So we would like to maybe add some plant flowers to the medians. There's just two of them. Or maybe some places around City Hall. Maybe annuals or perennials, but we would take care of them as Parks and Rec. And the biggie is a mural on the bathroom wall at Morgan Park. We're thinking of something very simple, like maybe a turtle or a palm tree or, you know, with a beach at the bottom, but something pretty simple. Starting with one side and maybe going all the way around, at least three sides. So we're talking to a couple of muralists in the area that have given us some of their ideas. So my big question to you, important people up there, would be, when we get our sketches for real, would you like to see them first? And you guys make the choice or as a committee, would Parks and Rec make the choice?
Where would the mural be?
I'm sorry?
Where would this mural be?
It's on the bathroom wall at Morgan Park. And we would start with the wall that faces the street.
Okay. I would be open to allowing Park and Rec to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Pick your favorite and present it to the council. And if we don't like it, then I'm sure that somebody will say something about it.
Okay, that's a deal. We hope, we hope they'll have some sketches next month for your meeting next month. Okay? The other thing is a suggestion to make our signs around the city, like at the park areas, more positive wording than so many circles with a big X on them that just are not very friendly and have more instead of, you know, no trash, no this, no that, please keep, help us keep our city beautiful type things. So that's just another suggestion for Parks and Rec.
Trying to keep us from looking like those guys. I guess. All right, any questions for Ms. Roberts?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you getting the blood drives back. And I did, I did, thank you Tammy. Okay, and I did visit Morgan Park since it's been reopened. And I brought up this already a couple of times about soap dispensers, which they are now in place. And that was a complaint.
Yeah, they have a couple of more things to do there. Like one of the toilets wasn't in either.
Yeah, but that was a complaint from a couple of beach cleaners. Why can't we get some soap in Morgan Park? And thank you. Anyone else? No? Ms. Elliott?
One thing that we might consider is having the pet bags in all the parks rather than just the one, I believe, that's just in Bayside Park.
I'm sorry, a what? A pet park?
I'm sorry, the pet waste, doggy, doggy bags.
Dog bags.
Provided at Bayside Park. Perhaps they could be in any of the parks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, the city attorney report. Mr. Mora, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to mention again, the legislative session ended March 8th. So a month ago today, we've provided you some legal updates and some of the more significant changes that we're monitoring. I say monitoring because the governor has not yet received some of the more significant legislation such as the building permitting, some of the building permitting timeline changes and some other, some other relevant changes that still sit before or await getting before the governor for final execution. But we will of course keep you apprised of that. You should have also received a legal memo providing you some analysis concerning recent Supreme Court jurisprudence on the use of social media by public officials. As far as, I had intended to speak to you tonight concerning the correspondence from Bella Shore. I wish to correct or address some of the statements made. The letter referenced is dated March 21st. It's dated after your election date. Your election here was March 19th. So the letter was dated March 21st. I did not receive it March 21st. That was a Thursday. I received it on, in my office on Monday, March 25th. I contacted their town attorney to discuss the matter. And in trying to reach our, Ms. Kardashian is actually no longer the town attorney in Bella Shore. She separated or left her employment with that firm. So I actually spoke with their, the acting town attorney through the Person Income Law Firm this morning precisely about this issue. The letter as phrase seeks to, raises two primary concerns. The first is an indemnification demand for the $23,075 related to their quote-unquote out-of-pocket attorneys fees litigating Bella Beach residents. I am not of the opinion that that is a responsibility of the city and I've communicated that to their, to their current legal counsel. The second issue raised was one of parking. That is, I would say, a secondary and possibly even tertiary issue as you look at this letter. One, in terms of the frequency with which that's used and two, the imminent ability of the parties to readily address that. The broader concern, the way the letter actually terminates, it says that if the city is not willing to honor the agreement as written, then perhaps the time has come to renegotiate the interlocal agreement. I think any attorney who has reviewed this, including an attorney who spoke earlier this evening, agrees it could benefit from a rewrite. Obviously, the, it is not the most detailed interlocal agreement to memorialize such what residents, I think, from both communities consider very significant rights, duties, obligations and privileges. And I think in navigating that, it can't, it would benefit from more detailed text. Of course, the challenge with any rewrite or exchange of any document or contract is the devil is in the, you know, the details, if you will, and what that looks like and what both parties might want from that. So that is the, not quite the penultimate sentence, the second to last sentence. Then it says, if the parties will not abide by the terms as written, then the intended efficacy of the agreement is no longer serving the public purpose. The town looks forward to the city's responses to these matters and a beneficial solution for both jurisdictions. My advice as your legal counsel is if both parties agree that the real problem here is the interlocal agreement, then what we should do first is see if we can achieve a rewrite, revision, modification of that agreement on terms that are beneficial to both parties and more explicitly memorialize the party's terms. The, the letter that was sent does not threaten litigation, at least not at this stage. I've talked to their council. That's not the posture at this time. There are very specific parameters for how jurisdictions go about that. We're not there yet. I believe that this is a situation, it is conflict. And my role, my goal with any conflict is to end it and define a resolution that benefits my client. And that's what we're working to do. I have been in contact with the city manager about this. We've talked about this at length, both immediately when I received it and in the days following. I have contacted, it was in fact in reaching out to their council, Attorney Kardashian, to discuss this, that I learned that she was not with the firm. And so that's obviously when you've had that kind of somewhat abrupt turnover, the priorities in the community flipped for a moment and that wasn't the highest priority last week. And I was traveling last week as well. And so with that, this is, it was the first call I made this morning, especially knowing I was coming and planning to speak to you this evening. I had intended originally to speak to you about this last Monday when our meeting was unexpectedly canceled. And then I left, the very next day left town. That was the reason why it was not presented to you in that time. So that was the, that was the posture there. But it was not held from you to achieve any other end than to allow for me to provide you with the full context of its parameters. And to seek to address and see what resolutions could be reached and get a better understanding from their council, what that party's position is, at least at this time, understanding either party's positions may change depending on the posture of it. There was some discussion tonight about the mean high water line. And just for the benefit of member Bankers, I know you like to research these things and sometimes see this, the coastal mapping section of Florida statutes, Florida statute 177.25. Sorry, no problem. I'll provide this. But Florida statutes 177.25 through 177.40 provides definitions that the Department of Environmental Protection is responsible for establishing the mean high water line, how that is done, on what intervals and what the significance of those terms as they are traditionally used. That's where that parlance comes from of the mean high water, the mean high water line, which are two different things. The mean high water, at least as statute, by statute, is generally defined as that average over a 19-year period. The mean high water line indicates where that average hits that dry ground and then how that's administered. Suffice to say, it is not a fixed uniform point that sits exactly X inches or feet off of every single property in the state of Florida. And so that's some context. That doesn't solve the answer now that I can show you. Here it is on a map, but just providing some guidance and insight on that issue. And those definitions are in 177.27 sub 14 and 15 for mean high water and mean high water line. I want to thank and commend the SBC student, if you're still here, sir. Fantastic presentation earlier, fantastic attention to detail. It is never easy or enjoyable to navigate such dense regulations and try and provide some context and clarity, especially where they are inconsistent community, community, and you try and figure out how did we get here? I've learned often in my career, you're not, oh, it's not always clear how we got here. We don't always make them. Sometimes we just fly them. So I'd like to commend that student for their really diligent work and reaching out to public officials to get more insight. That's commendable. Not a lot of people do that level of diligence and I think that should be commended. As I review my notes, I believe those were the most significant things I wished to address in my report, but as always, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any issues you'd like me to.
Counsel, any questions for the city attorney? Why weren't we given that letter? I'd like to get a copy of it.
You certainly will get a copy of it. The why of it was simply, I received it and intended to provide you the context immediately at that meeting last Monday. When I traveled, I just, I didn't want to give you something and then make myself unavailable to discuss it. It warrants discussion. Also, given the intention that this, that to the extent there's been conflicts between the two jurisdictions, I thought it warranted addressing openly so that there would not be some perception that I was telling you and only you. I was, I was planning to present it in a public forum for your knowledge and consumption. And also, I wanted the opportunity to discuss it with you, to contextualize it rather than say, hey, here's a letter I got. Call me if you want this. Because I, it is, the knee jerk reaction is of course, what are you, what is this about? Why are we fighting about this? The city wasn't a party to this. What are you doing? And I think that rather than jump immediately to a fighting posture, there is a solution here based on the way that it's written, that the solution is renegotiation of the agreement. And I think all parties involved agree, no pun intended, that the agreement could be done better. So maybe that's the near-term solution and seeing if that can be done before everybody simply retreats to, you know, points of conflict and their fighting postures.
What they have, in my opinion, doesn't mean nothing. I don't believe they follow the interlocal agreement. They took away our parking violations. As a trustee, I don't think you can make money off of it. As a trustee, I don't think you can profit off the trust in the state of Florida. And I don't know where the revenue is going when they're citing people with parking tickets. And that's not your problem.
Not at this stage. And perhaps those are the sorts of things that warrant addressing in the process. And that's because my client is not one person I have, I serve aboard. I would not want to go to them having spoken individually to each of you without you also having the benefit of that discourse with each other, which is the other reason I wanted to present it publicly. Because if any one of you simply told me your position and said, well, you know, what of it? I said, well, I work for the majority of this, of this body. And forgive me, Member Shaw Elliott, as I'm not making eye contact with you through this platform, but I work for all of you and I wanted to make sure all of you had the opportunity to receive the information, discuss it with each other if you desire. But at this stage, my intention is to make contact with their current attorney. And I've already done that today and I committed to him that once I'd spoke with my client this evening, I'd be in a better position to see if my suggested course of action is what my client wanted so that we could explore solutions from there.
Who's your current attorney?
Dan, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, let me just pull up the letter and so I can say, Daniel... There it is. Daniel Lewis is the attorney from the Person Income Law Firm who is presently filling in. I will say just as a professional courtesy to Mr. Lewis, as you might imagine, when one of your colleagues suddenly departs, who's serving multiple municipal clients, he is drinking from several fire hoses. But he was kind enough to make time for me both last week. I contacted him the Monday that our meeting was canceled. And he was not in a position substantively to discuss it. We committed to speak a week from that day and then we spoke this morning.
When we're talking about the high means watermark, you're right about the 19-year average.
Yes, it's in the section.
Frequent beachgoer. I had known at least twice, I've been told four times. I've seen him right after the day and they guys go out and survey. But this last time, I've actually seen guys survey going on the properties, embellishments, for veterans. I go and talk to them. I said, why, what are you doing? You know, I know they're surveying, they go lay out. What are you doing with the dad? We give it to the county. All right? And that's all I get. But they always say, but you're losing more and more and more each time. So I wrote to, I wrote to all the county commissioners today about this problem. Give me some kind of definition of where those high means watermark is in the 19-year survey. Because where do we sit and lie on the beach anymore? Who live between First and 19th Street, Bella Beach? I go down the highway, across the Gull line, I'm excited for that. But I know there's a line there telling me to stay here. All right? So this is a real flagrant, my dear.
Mr. Banker, if you need that answer, you should call Kelly Lee.
She's got back to me there and I...
I talked to her about it and the Kelly Commission's not gonna, they're not gonna answer your questions because they don't know the answers.
Well, and they give it usually to Kelly and then I won't get an answer from her either.
Yes, direct. And in addition to the county, it may be that the Department of Environmental Protection or it's a regional outpost here locally, might be in a position as well. I'm happy to look into the issue in a broader sense to see if there's just a map. But the, the fact is that it is, because it is a point based on an average over time, it is, it is a fixed point that can and does change. And so that I can understand the challenge and frustration there. I don't administer it, I'm just explaining it.
You'll probably get a copy from Ashley. We need to get in contact with her all of a sudden.
Ashley, I spoke with the attorney general's office and they will not be engaging in that because they don't give legal advice to individual like the... Thank you.
Ms. Mora, where do you think the, the direction of their new attorney? Do you think that they're, as far as renegotiating the current agreement? Do you think that that's something that they suggested, the attorney suggested, or do you think it's coming from their commission?
I'm not going to speculate because I simply don't know. And I don't know that it'll be fruitful or constructive for me to do so. What I will say is whomever it's coming from, the letter as written could have ended a lot of different ways. It ended with perhaps we need to renegotiate this agreement. There was a member of the public spoke at length tonight and said, this is a poorly written agreement, paraphrasing. And so I think if, if multiple people can look at this and say, this can be better, that to me seems like, well, there's a lowest common denominator here among the cited problems. And so I know that, in my view, that I think that's the best course of action. And speaking with the attorney who's presently serving as the town attorney, I get the impression as well that if an amicable solution can be reached, that's the preference at this stage.
Absolutely.
And also, you know, inasmuch as there is a fine... And also, you know, inasmuch as there is a financial demand in here, the second issue is sort of, as to the parking, is resolved by addressing the interlocal agreement. And again, the dispute there is that according to the interlocal agreement in its vagaries, it says that the parking shall be for the use and benefit of the residents and property owners east of Gulf Boulevard, you know, in Bellard Beach. I think the letter of the law, that there's an argument to be made, even as our temporary permit program exists, though it is not often used, it is always for the benefit of a resident, right? It is, Joe can't walk off the street, John Doe can't walk in and say, I want one of these, you have to establish that you're a property owner. I think there's a, well, that's not quite the spirit of that, or perhaps how it's written from their view. But regardless, an interlocal agreement provision may well address that. So the only real dispute here is the funds that I, again, my, my position is, I don't believe they're legally entitled to them. I think it's used as a, it maybe uses an incentive to come to the negotiating table. But I don't think, based on my experience with you as a client, that there's some great reluctance in this community to renegotiate. I think there's a desire. And renegotiate doesn't necessarily just mean come to new terms, come to better, clearer terms. And again, the challenge will be, as in any negotiation or renegotiation, that was in the details, it's not clear what either party wants from that. They didn't say, we want to renegotiate the interlocal agreement, and here's our list of demands. It said, we need something better than this, because this keeps causing problems, and that seems to be true.
It is true.
So, you know, and that came up when we talked about towing, that came up when we talked about gate accesses, and things that this council has discussed, or versions of it, over the past three years. Anytime we've talked about those beach accesses, it comes out to, well, the agreement doesn't quite say this, and we gotta find out what their position is. We can memorialize and address a lot of those, potentially. And again, I think that there's value in seeing if an amicable resolution can be reached in terms of just getting, reaching a better work product.
Ms. Mora, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I've actually contacted the EP probably a couple of years ago. And obviously, that 19-year average is an elevation. So it's an elevation, I'm assuming, I haven't seen the report, that takes into account sea level. So it might be minus 2.5 feet below sea level, so it is an elevation. And when you get that most current 19-year average, you can simply go out there on the beach, set up a survey instrument, and anywhere that, that level is, is where that line would be. And it's gonna vary, just like we talked about, from house to house, because the sand levels could vary a lot, somewhat, or none at all. And so that line isn't gonna be a straight line from first to 19th. It's gonna be based on the elevation of the sand levels there, and that's where it is. And they probably update it, I'm guessing, maybe monthly, over that 19-year average, or it could be annually, over that 19-year average.
I do wish to address one issue as it relates to that, inasmuch as where that line is is affecting where beachgoers can enjoy the beach without being moved or disturbed, inasmuch as that's being started as a function of a code violation, if you will. Code enforcement under chapter 162 of Florida statutes provides that if a complaint is made, that it cannot be anonymous, absent certain exigent circumstances, but it doesn't prevent proactive policing of your codes. You're not limited to enforcing your codes only when a complaint is made. You can proactively go through your community and say, we didn't receive a complaint, this was done on a proactive basis. And that's true of what is tall grass for those things. So I just, inasmuch as that's a concern, I do want to make sure that's clear.
Counsel member Elliott, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, one of each. And I just wanted to thank city attorney Mora for his professionalism throughout this whole process, and we know that you represent us very diligently and in a very respectful way. And so I for one remain very, very confident in your representation of us, and look forward to hearing more about these issues. I do have a question about the result of the election, and that concerns the section 2.07 regarding meetings. We know that that provision passed, and that the quorum for a meeting is based on the majority of the council. And we know also that the membership of the council has been reduced to five, but it's for a period in the future. So what is the effective date of the quorum provision?
That takes effect immediately. The quorum language was part of the, the quorum language was not contingent on another date. It is, as it reads, it's a majority of the council shall constitute a quorum if the council is composed of five members, six members, or seven members in a given time, then that's the council. I would interpret that as the council as seated. And so a majority of the council, otherwise, and so in that context, as I interpret that, it's accept as provided. The language now says, except as provided in 2.06(c), which is your provision governing vacancies. A majority of the council shall constitute a quorum. So a majority of the five, six, or seven, or four, as it is now, three of you is a majority, that's a quorum right now, that's all we need. And then it says, no action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by an affirmative vote of a majority of the council, the same language. So at least, if only three of you show up, all three of you are gonna need to approve a measure, because that's a majority of the council. So it's the same parlance, so it should, it should yield the same result, the same map. So that's, that's how that reads now.
So March 19th, when the voters voted before charter?
Yes, sir. And I failed to mention that in my report, thank you for reminding me of that.
Well, what I'm saying is that we went to a three-person quorum, one to nineteen.
Based on your present composition of four, yes.
So, and why was the meeting canceled last week?
The meeting was canceled last week at the request of the presiding officer, based on a...
Because we had the last year.
With a charter, clearly says the senior council number one.
That was not, that was not a legal interpretation I provided on that, the meeting was canceled either.
But our charter is our legal interpretation on how we run the city. And if, and if we had three people for a quorum, that meeting should have never been canceled, basically.
Okay.
I don't know why we have a charter. If we're not gonna file the charter, then why have one? The other question I have is, what's the statute limitations on filing an appeal on any charter amendments? Because I can't find it in our ordinances, and I can't find it in our charter. And I think if it's made, we're missing, is it open in any statute?
I don't provide legal advice to people on how to challenge the ordinances.
I'm just asking, is there a statute filed? Because people ask me.
People are free to pursue their own legal remedy if they feel that something should be challenged. That's not, that comes, statute of limitations, as you stated, comes from Florida statutes. And that is not a matter of the city's ordinance or charter, as to when a legal challenge can be commenced.
I'm just asking, is there, is it in our ordinance that you know that you can, is there a time?
It is in Florida statutes. I believe there is, there's one period, based on, based on how soon you do it changes the standard of review for the challenge. I have handled such challenges in the past for other communities, there is in fact a statute of limitations. I don't have an encyclopedic knowledge of all of them, I believe it's somewhere between four and five years, and then after like six years, then it's more deferential or something of the sort. I may be off on my numbers, but yes, there is a statute governing, statute of limitations for legal challenges of ordinances, and I don't know what it is specific to charter amendments when you have a ballot measure, that might be a more restrictive statute of limitations as opposed to a legislative enactment of the council.
And the other reason I ask is, I went to the Florida League of Cities about this, but people couldn't hear me, and they told me it goes to your ordinances as per city attorney.
Okay, well, so, well, be that as it may, not everybody in the Florida League of Cities is a litigator.
Well, that's why they say go to your city attorney.
Right, not everybody's a litigator with the Florida League of Cities, I would tell you, as a litigator. Again, generally speaking, your legislative enactments, your ordinances and resolutions are subject to those statutory schemes. I've not had occasion to handle a legislative or a legal challenge to a ballot measure. I know of them being litigated, I've not had one where I've had to specifically defend it, so I just don't, I can't answer that here, it wasn't a question that was supposed to be before this moment.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? And Ms. Elliott, I appreciate your comments, your appreciation for Mr. Mora, I will agree with that 100%. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mora, and appreciate the detailed report. Now we are all to item number nine, city manager report. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. So this report's slightly dated, because we had to postpone the end of the meeting, but the, we actually do have the amendment to the Indian Rocks Piggyback Agreement for the underground project, and that is later on the agenda, so we'll discuss that when we get to it. The Stormwater Improvement Project, I just made a note that March 19th, the city passed out the door hangers notifying the residents of the corresponding streets of the project, that the project was taking place, and that there'd be future notifications coming directly from the contractor, but giving them contact information with the city if any problems do arise. And if you haven't seen it already, the contractor has started cutting away the curb and moving it on Morgan Drive, they've started on the north end of the project, but they still maintain that they will move to the southern end if we feel like we've come to a decision point on that, so that we can take care of some of the areas of the city that the flooding force in before hurricane season comes around. They've also had the sole contractor who's been cleaning out the oysters and marbles and pipes, they've started that process, and then once they get the cleaning done, they should move forward to the cure and place pipe, which I think is important to get done because it's to fix the pipes that we know that have weaknesses in infiltration. And the code project for our next work session, which is gonna be on April 22nd, we are gonna cover the remaining, remaining chapters, so that's gonna be 70, 74, 78, 82, 86, and 90. We're actually gonna incorporate the infamous sign ordinance in that work session as well. So Mr. Sermon is prepared for that, and we will be passing out the outlines and full chapters for your review. Lastly, the RFP for Audit and Services, I have on here, April 4th, that the audit committee was gonna meet, that got delayed due to the appointment of the committee members, so our new date is set for April 16th next week, and at that meeting, we will be reviewing the RFP, it's gonna go out shortly after, and their review of the audit itself, and it will be presented in the meeting. And then just as a note, I am going to be out of the office April 23rd through 26th, go to the Florida Flood Plane Management Council. I will be available via email, it's all in working. That's all I have.
I do have, just a question, right quick, concerning the documentation you sent out today, the improvements, the results of the survey concerning pumps and stormwater drains, would you like to just kind of briefly touch on that?
So I've been kinda queuing the city engineer, Larry Flutie, to get us the report that we've been asking for, at the recommendation of the pump manufacturer, they came up with a double pump design, so he started with a design that incorporated two pumps, in case one pump is not working correctly, the system still works, based on the numbers, it's, you know, it's a pricier project for that reason. And it also involves, we have to use structures that are cast in place, concrete, because they have to be designed to fit the pumps. One of the options, it taught the engineer was, you know, what I'm asking, is it, is there maybe a whole one-pump system, and try to reduce the cost of the project? And that is, in his memo that I sent as well, what he's, he was explaining, so he gave us the cost estimates for this two-pump system for two locations, which is Ninth Street and then the Seventh Avenue Street area, and both those projects can be done independent, but I just wanted to make sure we incorporated both areas. But what he is going to do now is try to fit a one-pump into a precast structure to make the project simpler, to try to reduce that cost. So that is what we're waiting for, but I wanted to get the report out that he, that he has currently, just so he had some numbers or something to look at. And also, you know, just send you questions, so I can get that information back and forth as much as possible, because we do have a lot of residents that are concerned about when we're gonna make this decision, and they want to have the stormwater project improvements from what we're currently going down on Ninth Street Cedar.
All right. Questions from the counsel?
Yes, sir. Kyle, that's great news, the Stormwater Improvement Project has started, barring any act of God, that our God, is there any timetable the contractor has estimated? I know we're not gonna go over detail, from the start to the finish.
I mean, there's optimistic talk of six months, but I can't convey, I mean, anything can happen.
Right, right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager?
Yes, I have several. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for confirming that the contractor is prepared to move south when conditions require that. Obviously, those of us that are south of the causeway have a great deal of concern about the impending storm season, and we want to be prepared for that as quickly as possible. I wasn't clear on when we will be receiving a final report. Do they have a date for that?
I don't have an exact date, I will push for it to get done this week, so that you guys have the report and will get. And then he is already committed to representing, you know, his firm and answering any questions at the next work session on the 22nd.
Okay, on the 22nd, board meeting, but what about the working meeting? Will we have something to discuss at the working meeting?
The 22nd is the work session.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, forgive me, all right, good, all right, that's, that's good news, appreciate that. And then with regard to the CUG review, just wanted to emphasize, chapter 86 regarding signs is the one where I think we had a lot of concern, which is interesting, because we don't have a lot of signs here in Tampa, but we talked about it before, and this, my comment before, was that let's look for ways that we can simplify it, so that we have something that is easily communicated. Should someone come to the front desk and say, I'd like to get permit for a sign, we have something that's easy to communicate to them for what those rules are. So that would be my comment about that, as we ready for that meeting, and I think when we looked at it before, we talked about getting some revisions to that, to that ordinance, rather than the one that was most recently proposed. Does our city attorney have any view on that?
Thank you, member Shaw Elliott. I will first address the point you weren't asking me that I failed to address in my report, which is to say, there was some discussion about the one-year look-back period being prioritized. I advised you at our last meeting that that would be put before the Planning and Zoning Board, before it went to you that already has been, that board is meeting on Wednesday, and we have, subject to the body appointing, members tonight, and that ordinance is one of the things they'll be looking at at Wednesday's meeting. To your question concerning the sign code, we've had discussions about that in the past, both when you were a member of the, of the Planning and Zoning Board, and also as part of this council. As far as simplifying it, that can be done, in each instance, I've asked for specific guidance beyond, I just want it clear, and I only say that because, while it may seem simple to some, the, this change is being made in response to Supreme Court jurisprudence, that Supreme Court opinion does not have a majority opinion, a series of plurality opinions, its progeny since then has made some clarity, but what we're trying, what we've provided you, the simple instruction was, we need to fix our sign code. What my firm drafted and provided was admittedly the most robust approach, if you want something more stripped down, we can do that, I just want to make sure I understand from a client need standpoint on what you consider essential, what you consider superfluous, so I can better provide you a work product that better meets your expectations. To date, the instruction's simply been, I, something else, and I'm happy to provide that, but I don't wanna work in futility. And so any, if you have, if any of you, having reviewed, wish to speak to me individually to give me your thoughts, reflections, and we can recirculate what was the previous draft as we, as we approached that, but that's, that's where that stands.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Kyle?
Kyle, if Bella Shores reaches out to you about that letter and says, "Hey, we're going to reduce our fees to $9,900, would you have the right to pay her 10 grand?" Would you notify us of that? Would you even attempt to pay that?
Of course.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Thank you, Mr. Reefer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, City Clerk's Report. Agent Renee.
Good, how are you? My report was included in the packet, and I have nothing further to report.
Counsel? Any questions or comments for the city clerk?
One comment, one comment, and that is, I continue to appreciate the level of detail in the minutes, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will second that in the time, Mrs. Olson. Great job. All right, we are now up to the consent agenda, items 11, 3, 14. This is for approval of the March 4th, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of the March 18th, 2024 City Council Work Session Minutes, acceptance of the 2024 Pinellas County Multi Jurisdictional Community Rating System Annual Report for Reporting for Public Information, Flood Insurance Improvement Plan and Flood Response Plan, and approval of a new statewide mutual aid agreement, S M A A, with the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is written and presented.
Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one because of the time delay ago. Elliot, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right. Now we are up to selecting councilmen. This is Agenda Item Number 15, Consideration of Applicants to Fill 1, Vacant City Council Seat to a Term Ending November 2026. With 82% of the voters agreeing to the reduction from seven to five council members, I propose that we fill only one seat, making for a five-member council. At this time, we're going to meet the candidates, and then we'll go forward. But I'm going to read exactly what it says on this little instruction set on how we do this. Following residents have applied to fill the vacant council seats, each applicant was verified through the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections Office as a registered voter in the city of Bella Beach, immediately preceding the first day of qualification for election as stated in the city charter. As per the city charter, the appointee shall hold office until the next election in the city on November 3rd, 2026. So what we're going to do is, we're going to introduce each one of the candidates in alphabetical order, and give each candidate three minutes to speak, and introduce, you know, herself, actually, as all yams, to the council and people here. So first, I would like to bring Doug Prescott Jr.
Yes, sir. All right, good evening. I'm Doug Prescott.
How are you doing, Mr. Prescott?
Yeah, how are you?
Doing well.
So I live at 108 22nd Street, Bella Beach, and I've lived here all my life, and I was looking for the opportunity to help out the city, keep it going, do what it's doing, and that's about it.
Counsel, questions?
Yes, do you have any particular background, whether it's working or otherwise, that you think would be a good fit for our city?
Yeah, I've been working with my family business for a whole life, so I'm a pretty good leader, and I'd like to transfer that over to the city.
That's great. So what is the business, if you don't mind me asking?
It's a moving storage business.
Thank you.
All right, and I need to confirm that you are a qualifying registered voter, a qualifying physical resident in Bella Beach.
Yes.
And a qualifying permanent resident and qualified my civil rights. Can you just say yes, confirm that for me?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Were there other questions from the council for this candidate? Okay. Let's move on to David Tinian at 105 15th Street.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I'd like to thank all the previous speakers as well. So I am recently retired after 32-plus years as an educator and athletic coach. I'm going to speak for a few moments on my qualifications and desire to serve our city council. First, I'd like to address my qualifications. I did take the liberty of reviewing the council's five-year strategic plan for our community, and I feel pretty confident that my life and career experiences have provided me with the qualifications necessary to contribute to realizing all five of the goals outlined in the plan. So regarding Goal Number One, Public Safety and Health, I taught at two high schools in my teaching career. Both schools, I was on the school improvement team on the safety committees. I also sponsored a student youth crime watch group at one of the schools, and I did chair the Safety and Security Committee at Bloomingdale High School. With Goal Number Two, Tax All Our Value, I have a lot of experience working within a budget. I was a long-term Social Studies Department Chair at St. Petersburg High School, where I supervised over 20 teachers and had to manage that budget each year. I also was a head coach for 11 years and had a budget to work with there as well. As the cook at our household, my wife and I also have to budget our grocery bill at Publix. If you've seen the prices there lately, you know, but that's no easy task either. My wife, by the way, is a Small Business Administration Portfolio Manager at a local bank, so we definitely, as a household, understand the value of keeping one's finances in order. Regarding Goal Number Three, Communication and Community, as a, you know, teacher and coach, that goes with the territory, I was a member of numerous communities, community boards. One that was particularly meaningful was a partnership with University of South Florida, St. Pete. I was a member of the Teacher Advisory Committee Board of Directors. I was also a supervisor and site-based mentor for developing teachers who wanted to go into the profession. I also, through coaching, served on a Board of Directors. It was a partnership between youth soccer programs in the area and our Tampa Bay Mutiny, which some of you may remember is our professional team from 1996 to 2001. Goal Number Four, Aesthetics. I might not have as much to offer there, although I do like working in my garden and growing my own cooking herbs. And actually, today I planted some more milkweed for my monarchs, which I've been raising. Goal Number Five, Beach and Waterfront, I think this is where I would truly shine. I was born and raised here. I grew up on these beaches. I see that 73% of Bella Beach is water. I think if you ask my wife, she would spend, she would probably say that I spend about 73% of my time on the water, fishing and kayaking and just enjoying our beach. I'm an outdoors enthusiast, I'm an environmentalist, I'm a member of CCA, the Coastal Conservation Association, and I'm also a member of Captains for Clean Water. Not too many people care more about the health of our beach and our waterfront than I do. It's truly a passion of mine. I also have a great deal of knowledge about working in government. I've taught courses in, well, courses that I've taught include American Government, Law Studies, Court Procedures, Legal Systems and Concepts, and my favorite course that I've ever taught, The Philosophy of Government. As a teacher, I also sponsored Teen Court, which was a partnership with Hillsborough County Court System, where my students got to actually litigate juvenile misdemeanor cases, and I also sponsor our mock trial teams. In 2005, I was awarded the Carol Bellamy Fellowship in Constitutional Studies, which granted me a full scholarship to earn my master's degree in Educational Leadership at University of South Florida. I am a staunch supporter of our constitutional rights and the concept of federalism. I believe that local government is best left to local leaders. We don't need people in Tallahassee or DC telling us how things should be on Bella Beach. As far as my desire to serve, I want to preserve the unique beauty and safety of our city. I try not to leave the beach when I don't have to, but every time I do, when I come to the hump on that bridge right over there, and I see the Gulf of Mexico, and I see our city, I can feel the weight lift off my shoulders, I feel peace, and I feel at home. I always want to feel that way, and I'm willing to work for all of us here, so we'll always feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tinian. Do we have questions? I liked your comment on when you go over the bridge.
Yeah.
I've gone over that bridge for over 10 years, and I really say a prayer thanking the Lord, and I'm praying to live here under His grace and help keep the city safe and the people peaceful.
Everyone I've talked to says the same thing. My wife and I, it doesn't matter where we go, it could be to Clearwater or Largo, or it could be somewhere beautiful in the Caribbean, when we get home, we just feel at home.
First, I would just want to thank all three applicants for having the desire and taking the time to submit the application and be interested in building our city. I did reach out to all three candidates. I had an opportunity to sit down with David. My personal opinion, I think he checks all the boxes. One that he didn't mention was taking a look online and saw where he was actually fishing on our beach, and was able to catch two decent-sized snook with one hook. So that's, that's pretty amazing, and I commend him for that.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. By the way, you can read that story at floorsportsman.com.
He told me he put them both back in the water, so that's.
I did, I did read both fish.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, Member Elliot, do you have any questions?
I was pleased to hear that you're part of the Captains for Clean Water organization. Are you active with them, and what kind of projects are you engaged with?
So as of now, I've not been activating any projects with Captains for Clean Water. I'm looking forward to getting involved with them. I've been more active in CCA because I've been a long-term member there. One of the coolest things that we did recently was we released juvenile stock redfish down in Fort DeSoto. I wish we had released them here in Bella Beach, but I'll take what I can get.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, where did you live before you moved to Bella Beach?
So I, Clearwater.
In Clearwater?
Yeah. My wife and I sold our house there a little over three years ago and moved here.
And so Bella Beach was always, that's where we want to eventually line up?
Yeah, this is where we want to be. Clearwater is just, it's changed too much for me, it's way too hectic. We like the peace and quiet of this community.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, very nice to meet you, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I'm a little way yet. I need to make sure that you are a qualified registered voter.
Yes, sir.
You're a qualifying physical resident.
Yes.
And a qualifying permanent resident.
Yes.
And a qualified my civil rights.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Anders Wellings.
Hello, my name is Anders Wellings. I'm a resident at 709 Harbor Drive. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present myself to the city council and the citizens of Bella Beach. A little background, I'm 62-years-old. I've been married to my wife for 40 years. She's a teacher in Pinellas County Schools for the past 25 years. I have three grown children, a daughter, two sons, and have blessed, blessed with four grandchildren. I was born in Sweden from Swedish and British parents, immigrated to the US when I was two years old, and raised and educated in the Northeast in Delaware, Pennsylvania area. I've lived in Pinellas County, Florida for the past 30 years, 20 years in the Palm Harbor area, 22 years in the Palm area, and eight years here in Bella Beach. We are in love with this town, the neighbors, and of course, the water, the beaches, and the weather. My hobbies include sailing. I'm an avid environmentalist. I, you know, being sailor, I'm out in the water all the time, always picking up trash along the way. I love traveling, I play soccer, tennis, and I love to babysit my bridge. I was educated as a mechanical and aerospace engineer at the University of Delaware. I've worked in the medical device field for almost 40 years with DuPont and Baxter Healthcare, as a mechanical engineer, a program manager, and a chief systems engineer. For a while, I liked to serve for Bella Beach. I want to do my part to help serve our community, and I feel now is the time. Our town is in need of more folks to serve. I'm also planning to retire this coming January, so I feel like I have some more time. If I don't get this position, I'll continue to look for other opportunities to serve this community. I work well in teams, both as a contributor and a leader. I've participated, collaborated, and led major medical device programs throughout my 40-year career. I enjoy trying to understand root cause of issues and bring new ideas to address them. I'm a good listener. I have demonstrated ability to successfully manage conflict and have a balanced view on when to stand my ground and when to compromise for the good of the community. I'm an optimistic person, who is also very practical and hands-on. I like to make decisions based on evidence. I'm more extroverted than, say, most many engineers you've met. My wife says I like to talk to a wall. I'll talk to a wall no matter what. In conclusion, I'm friendly, trustworthy, fair-minded, and would love the opportunity to serve this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wellings. Do we have questions from the council?
Yeah, just a comment. I did have an opportunity to speak with Anders as well. He was, when he answered the phone, he was in P West.
P West, yeah. I was sailing back from Fort Lauderdale.
On his boat, and he was hoping to make it back for last Monday. He did make it back, but we changed the meeting, so he had plenty of time, so we had.
Yeah, I sailed like 36 hours straight, so it would have been exhausting to show up at that gate, but either way. We're glad you're here today.
Mr. Baker, do you have any questions?
I want to just thank all three of you for your line. One of the questions about why we had charter changes was because we didn't find enough candidates, and you guys will approve this one. Well, I agree with you, but thank you.
Ms. Elliot, do you have a question?
Anders, you've heard tonight some of the issues that we're looking at as a council, including the stormwater project, signage, neighborhood issues. What in your background would give you specific skill to bring to resolution of those issues?
I certainly feel like, you know, I'm a mechanical engineer, I've done fluidics a long, long time, dealing with fluid flowing through pipes and systems like that, so I, I think I can bear a very practical approach to that. I definitely like to, I definitely am an avid reader, I will read deep into the topics, I definitely like to, I won't say I understand all the topics that are on the table right now, and so, but I do need, I have the time, I will have the time to get up to speed on all the topics, and I definitely like to thoroughly research things before I pick up my mind.
I have a question. If there was something that you could change immediately, or correct or make better in Belle Arbeach, what would be the first thing on your way to order?
I think I'm very, I'm on 8th Street, it's right there, so I'm very familiar with some of the flooding issues, so I think that would be top of mind for me, 8th and 9th Streets.
All right. Any other questions?
I do have one statement to make, and sometimes when we're making these decisions, we have very good qualified candidates, which is the case again, so I don't think there's any losers here. Sometimes we have to look at little tiny things. One of the things that we don't often think about is the actual physical location of our council members, because we represent the whole city, but it goes without saying that when we're close to certain streets, that it's easier for us to stay in contact with them, find out what, how they feel about the issues that we're voting on, things like that. So, just something to consider, I know we have a couple of people in the south, south of Causeway, I'm on 20th, Dave is further to the north, and I know David is 15th Street, so we're kind of getting spread out there, which I think is a nice thing, just my opinion.
Yeah, and the fact that I'm on the south, south of Belle Arbeach, I think wouldn't bias me in, however you, I definitely want to review all the parts of our community, like being fair-minded about where the resources are needed.
Any other questions?
Just to note, our charter clearly says council at large, so it doesn't say we get all day on one street.
Right.
If we want to, if we want to put wards in it, let's put wards in it, but that's not the charter.
All right, so I have to ask you the final questions, which is, are you a qualifying registered voter?
Yes.
Qualifying physical resident?
Yes.
And qualifying permanent resident?
Yes.
And qualified by civil rights?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have the opportunity, if you have any other questions for prior candidates, if you would like to ask them any more questions before we end this portion of analysis.
Good.
Councilmember Elliott?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so now what we're going to do is, we're going to vote by paper ballot. Actually, we're not going to do that just yet. Hold on one second. Now it's time for the council to, or the public to speak. Would anyone like to address the council with these three candidates? Yes, sir. Please come right on up, give us your name and address.
I'm Doug Prescott, senior, and I just wanted to add one more thing he didn't bring up, is that his grandfather served for city council here, and myself, I served about 20 years ago or whatever. So, he's been here since 24, I've been here since 65, so we've got a long history in the city, and we really, really care about it. And so, he's very interested, I don't think he really gave a, bring up his whole bio, he came up here, so I guess, well, as much as he should have, but there's a lot of history with the Prescott family here.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Any other citizen comments? Yes, sir.
We were wondering where you were.
I'm here. Joey Shirley, 207 Harrison Avenue. I want to thank all three candidates, I think they're all great, but I do want to go into, just quickly say, Doug, I've known Doug all his life, he's been a great kid, it's nice to see the younger generation getting involved, his son, my son and him are the same age, and it's just nice to see getting some young folks involved. So, I know there may be some opportunity, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I thought I had heard that maybe we were adding three members tonight, am I, did I misunderstand something there?
We still have to make a motion on that, and, but my proposal was one because of the fact that a majority, large majority of the community said five is, is what we'd like to have, and we are not required to fill all seats, so that was, that was my goal.
Okay, just saying that we did have to fill all seats, I think that we have three great candidates, so thank you guys for considering them all.
Thank you.
I take offense to the young lady, too, by the way.
All right, so now it's time to vote, and basically, with the way that this is working, I guess what you would do is one, two, three. Do you think that that would be the appropriate way to handle this? Okay, and then after we take the vote, Renee will present the count, and then someone will make a motion to move forward.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
And what is your vote? As number one? They are ranking them one, two, and three.
Sorry, ma'am clerk, we need to read the results back, we need to have each member voted.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Elliott ranked them, Anders Wellings first, David Tenyon second, Doug Prescott third. And then councilmember Bankard voted them all equally as one. Mayor Gaddis chose Doug Prescott as one, Anders Wellings as two, and David Tenyon as three. Councilmember Roberts chose David Tenyon as one, Anders Wellings as two, and Doug Prescott
Well, there's a few ways, if you wanted to go the way to GPA, well, there's one way. I would suggest instead that however many people you're going to appoint, you have to start with one, right? You're filling at least one vacancy tonight, you've not necessarily reached a conclusion on that, so it may be beneficial to all pick one member on another ballot rather than do the ranked choice, since you're not filling multiple seats, and see if that yields any clear majority decision in light of that. If you wish to do it on a separate round, a second round of voting that way, you can do it that way. Ultimately, the stewards of this process for the charter aren't the commission, it's the council. The council fills the vacancies, so it's ultimately your decision on how to proceed. But given that you're at least filling the first vacancy, it may be that the ranked voting approach is not most suitable at this time, noting one member chose not to use that approach either, so it may, it may be best to take a different approach to yield a different result.
Let's do another round of ballots, and we'll start with just the first. Thank you, Mr. Moore. So, we just pick one?
Yes, that's the process, I vote for Anders Wellings.
Okay, so in this round, councilmember Elliott selected Anders Wellings. Councilmember Lloyd Roberts selected David Tenyon. Mayor Gaddis selected Doug Prescott.
So, just for clarity's sake, section 2.06(c) of the charter says a vacancy on the council shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the council. We have four members of the council, so a majority vote would be three of you. Any person appointed by council fill a vacancy, will hold office, and we've already discussed all that, so at this stage, it is ultimately, again, your process. It sounds to me, based on the way that the voting is working, that there may be some value before you go back to the ballots and having a discussions body on what your goal is here tonight and how you intend to proceed.
Counsel?
Well, we have an open suggestion of putting one person on, but it's not been, it hasn't been motioned or it hasn't been approved, so right now, our charter clearly says seven members. So, I don't know how we can vote for one, I don't know how we can vote for two. Again, we have three people that want to serve council here. Charter says we can put them on. Why would we want to tell them not to serve one council? I don't understand it. I mean, I don't think the voters have a pro, the voters said we can reduce it to five, voters didn't say we have to reduce it to five. Their term's going to be up at the end of this session, so just put them on.
Mr. Roberts?
Well, I think it does make sense to listen to the citizens. I realize, Mr. Bankard, that we don't have to do this until the next election in '26, November of '26. But my perspective, the way I look at it, is the citizens voted by a pretty big margin that they wanted to go to five, understanding that we don't have to. It still makes the most sense to me to listen to the voters. Six, six council members is not an option, in my opinion, we can't have an even number of council members. So, by definition, it's one or three, and I think because of what the citizens said, I support the one.
Thank you. Councilmember Elliott, would you like to weigh in on this?
This is, this is a conundrum, is it not? There certainly is no requirement that we fulfill full all positions, but Mr. Bankard makes a good point in that they are there, we have people that are willing to serve. At the same time, it also relieves some of the pressure of the voting. At the same time, it also relieves some of the pressure of the voting issues to the extent that we have more, at least during this interim process. I could probably be, I'm having difficulty coming down on a particular position like this one. But I can support either way. We've got, we've got good people willing to serve.
I'm sorry, say that last sentence.
We have good people willing to serve.
Thank you.
All right, and I am aligned with, with Mr. Roberts. This was my attempt, was to go ahead and bring this forward so that it looks like the future of our council, what the citizens voted for. I don't know how many out in this audience, but it was around eighty, I think eighty-two percent, something like that. And the city has spoken. So I am going to stand behind what I'm trying to make happen tonight, which is to go to a five-member council. I'm grateful for all three candidates being here, but I don't think that seven is the direction that, that this council needs to be going any further. So what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to select one. Any other comments?
Arm wrestle.
What's that?
Arm wrestle.
Arm wrestle, right. I'll go for that. Well, what we, what we need to do is vote again, and, yes.
In the past, our provisions in our charter allows for drawing of straws, and you may have to come to that.
That's true.
Because no one's willing to give. You may have to do that.
Thank you.
Let's do one more. No, it's, we're really beyond it, but I'm going to, she came up, so let's, let's hit here. Let's start with, with Joe Lantz. Three minutes.
I will take twelve, I promise you. So, first off, there's no motion on the floor. Mayor Gaddis, if you want to make the motion, you can make it, but you need to yield the floor to the most senior member, because you don't have a vice mayor, and that would be Frank Bankard. Okay? In terms of whether you put one, two, or three on, I agree with Mr. Roberts, you can't have an even number. So it's either one, or it's three. But what I find somewhat ironic is that this whole vote was sold to the voters on the idea that we can't get seven good people to run. Well, three good people just stepped forward tonight, so you've got seven. And I'm with Frank Bankard, take them. The way people have dropped off this council for a variety of reasons, you can't have too many people out here, and the extra debate is fine. To Mr. Morris's point, and maybe this has changed since I was mayor, but your charter changes didn't become effective until they were filed with the Secretary of State. And if that is the case still, and that's what I was told, because if you remember, we changed the charter one time where the mayor was allowed to bring a motion, and I was told we had to wait until the Secretary of State accepted it. Well, either I was lied to, which is a problem, a civil rights problem, so I hope I wasn't lied to. Or your charter changes aren't effective yet, you have a seven-member council. So clarify it, because the worst thing you could do is put people on this council and find out that you did something wrong, and everything you did is void. Please, check this through, and if you need to call a special session and do this on another night, this can wait one more night. You do have enough for a court, and then you could run the city business. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I'm not immediately aware of that. I'm not saying that there's no such requirement. I'm also not aware of what's been sent to him at this stage administratively. So ultimately, again, I would defer to how you're proceeding, and I will continue until I look into that concern, as that's the first that's been raised.
Would someone like to table this, this particular, there's been no motion yet.
I'm sorry, we had others.
Yes.
Tammy Lavenda, 97, Harper Drive. For what it's worth, I did vote to decrease the council member down to five people. And I know your point, saying this is what the citizens voted for, but like, the main reason was because no one was running, and it was a great fear that was kind of going around that, you know, Tallahassee would take over, our city council would be diminished, you know, it would be taken out of our hands locally. So I, I voted for it, but I by no means have, like, issues with seven people on the council. And no one was running for so long, and no one was stepping up. So just, for what it's worth, maybe people voted for different reasons to vote it down to five people, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
Yes, sir. Hello, Mr. McIntyre?
Name's Hart McIntyre, 3040 High Biscuit Street. And clearly, the people did vote and said, "Let's get this to five." But I think we need to look beyond just tonight, just beyond the next year. This is more of a long-term situation. And when you compare this beautiful city, you look at the number of council members that have been on the board or on the council, it's greater than communities much, much larger than us. Having seven has prevented us from getting business done here. We can get good business done with five, and the votes were supportive of having five council members. I think every council member should pick one and not try to muddy this up. People have asked for five, and I encourage the council to stick to that.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, your charter in Section 9.01 states, "Upon adoption of the charter amendment by a majority vote of the electors, council shall have the amendment incorporated into the charter. The revised charter shall then be filed with the Florida Department of State, and it will then be in effect." That is how it reads in your charter. The channel, the language from the Florida statute in 166.031 says, "Upon adoption of an amendment to the charter of a municipality by a majority vote of the electors, voting in a referendum upon such amendment, the governing body of said municipality shall have the amendment incorporated into the charter and shall file a revised charter with the Department of State. All such amendments are effective on the date specified therein or as provided in the charter." The date specified therein was immediately effective upon adoption. However, with the language in your charter stating that all proposed amendments shall then be filed with this Department of State and then be in effect, that would militate that these Department of State must have it transmitted to them. I'm not clear whether or not that has happened as of yet, Mr. Mayor. In light of that, and in light of the stalemate that we've been in for the past few minutes here, it may warrant tabling this matter to ensure that there's no issue.
Thank you very much. Would someone like to table this, table or table?
I have just one quick question. If we didn't do that, from what you stated earlier over the four, we could still have to have three for one person.
Well, that amendment was also part of the charter amendment, so I would recommend that you table this to, well, any concern on what is and is not in effect based on the effect of the amendment. And we can ensure that all of this is promptly and diligently transmitted to the Department of State post-iss.
So my recommendation would be we have a special council meeting prior to our work session on the 22nd. I mean, we'll be, would I be good with that?
Mr. Bankard?
No, I think we should proceed as the agenda shows states and follow the charter as the charter shows states. I mean, let me read to you what you guys voted. "Shall the city amend the charter to provide for a council composite of five at-large council members, including the mayor, comma, as opposed to existing language providing for a city council composite of seven at-large council members, including the mayor, and adjust the corresponding voting requirements for the council to take action?" Question mark. Okay? So it doesn't say we have to put this into effect today, tomorrow, next year. We should have another meeting, put this on the agenda to say that the five council members as the city electorate voting should go into effect on a certain date. That would be following our charter, that would be following amendment two.
And the language in the amendment does provide the date, which is, again, because there were four separate amendments, all of which were functionally interrelated. And in my, following the, following the election, I did attempt to provide you with not just the legal ease of it, but a exposition of how it could, how this process would work. My legal advice has been, nothing in the charter mandated that you only fill a single position. That is ultimately at the discretion of this council, as the council is the lone body responsible for filling vacancies. So when I, when asked, in my FAQ phrase, "The electorate approved a council of five members, right?" I said, "Yes, but not right away." There shall be a city council, and then I referenced the language and explained that the transition is complicated by the fact that you presently have the three vacancies. If the council presently had all seven positions filled, the council would transition to a five-member council during the November 2026 election. Had there not been any Form 6 vacancies, you would have transitioned at the November 2026 election. And you can still transition at the November 2026 election if that is the desire of the council. You can, conversely, and I said, you can fill one, two, three, and sensibility being what it is to fill with the even number, you have that option. My advice at this stage, given that much of this is contingent on charter amendments taking effect, that we prompt, we address the issue with the Department of State, so there can be no question, no challenge. You've suggested tabling it to the 22nd. I think Mayor Bank, Member Bankard, your statement of "We have another meeting," I think is consistent with what the mayor has recommended. It's simply in dispute as to what we'll be doing on that day, whether you're filling one, two, or three, which I think this body will have the opportunity to not just go by the mandate of the election, but as you talk to your constituents in the intervening time, maybe perhaps gain some clarity on where you think this may need to go. But I, at this stage, my advice to you would be to, to set this to a later date, whether it be the 22nd or otherwise, to avoid any issue, as even a member of the council suggested there may be legal challenges directed to these charter amendments.
Well, for clarity reasons, putting three people on tonight would not, would not be violating anything. Question at hand, the voters voted on, gave exclusive rights for the council to choose the time, place, and date to put five people on that set.
I'm not sure that I agree with how that was phrased, but correct that if you filled all three positions tonight, that would not present an issue. Thank you.
All right, would someone, would you like to favor this?
I wouldn't.
If that's the case, I would suggest making a motion.
I move that we table this until some date in the future.
Do I have a second?
Are we going to, do we want to make it a specific date?
I'm sorry. I think it would be preferable to, if, given that we know we're convening in two weeks, it may be preferable to state that, and if we need to change it, we can provide notice as appropriate. So yes, I think it would be, my recommendation would be that we know we're already convening in two weeks, perhaps setting that date to provide reasonable expectations. And if we, if we can't do it then, we can notice as appropriate.
Did you get that feeling?
I did, and subject to that revision, then I would second that motion.
Will, is the maker of the motion, will I amend the motion to table it to the 22nd?
I am.
Is the second on the floor? All in favor?
Yes.
No?
Aye.
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 All right, it's tabled. Where is it? I don't think it is.
No.
I think it is because it's not, oh, unanimous.
Right, it's not unanimous.
Oh, you're just loving it, aren't you?
I'm not loving it. I'm loving what we presented to the people that we couldn't fill seven spots.
Yeah, seven people.
Let's put people on, on two, sir. Why, why cast these people? There's three great candidates who are out there. Why do I, I'm not trying to push you guys back down for you, you know, but.
I, I, all I'm here is to give advice, you're both making decisions.
But we have three great people here. Let's put them on. We wouldn't have had these problems for the record if you would have took my suggestion in December and put two people on instead of one, even though we knew the vice mayor was leaving within two weeks. So this council's put themselves in a quid pro quo, not Frank Bankard. All I've done is follow the charter. Forgive me.
When we were discussing this also, as somebody pointed out earlier, a very, very, very large majority of the other towns similar to us, as well as larger towns and cities, have five commissioners or council members. We were one of the few that had seven. But nobody knows the real reason why it ever started with seven. But clearly, the majority of the towns and cities in Pinellas County at least have five.
Correct. I guess we're just stuck here until the 22nd. So, Ian?
We certainly do not have to stay, stay here in a state of quantum indecision. If there is no clear majority, there is no appointment made tonight. And a majority in this case actually is all four members. If there's no, if all four of you cannot come to an agreement, then the matter simply fails, and we can see if the matter can be revisited at a subsequent. But we need not sit and stalemate if there's no compromise or any resolution to be had between the parties.
Okay, well, would you mind passing out the ballots? And let's vote for three candidates and see what happens.
Mayor, I'm not clear on what the instruction is, just so I know.
Well, we can't, we cannot table because it requires unanimous vote. So we're still voting.
For one, two, and three?
For one, two, and three.
We're, you just put yes or no on all three candidates. It's like one, two, and three, it is now. Just yes and no.
Councilmember Elliott, would you like to weigh in? Is she not on?
She's not connected.
Okay, so from Lloyd Roberts, selected David Tenyon, yes. Doug Prescott, no, and Ander's Wellings, no. Mayor Gaddis selected no on all three. Councilmember Bankard selected, gave them all one rating. And I don't have Councilmember Elliott's vote at this time.
You invite her all, just because of my no votes, it dies.
We'll still need Member Elliott's votes reported, as she is otherwise generally present for this meeting. If she's intending to remain present, we should have her voted for. But I agree with. But I agree with the conclusion that the matter fails.
Are you calling her?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I do apologize for that, but, and I, I must also apologize, I missed what's before the board.
The, each council member has been directed to vote yes or no on the three candidates. You can vote yes or no in any combination you so desire. But the other members have voted, and we need your vote for the record.
What were the other votes?
Everybody else voted on a, on a blind ballot, it'd be best if you stayed, just read your rec, your vote into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, I thought they, it had been discussed. So I would vote for one and Mr. Wellings.
So that's a yes as to Anders Wellings and no as to the other two, is that correct?
Yes. And I don't really see that as no in terms of.
Understood. Within the, within the paradigm within we're working, that we're working in in this moment. Understood. With that, Mayor, the matter fails, at this point you have no clear.
Can we get, could we get the reading of the table?
Sure.
You might read the last, okay. Doug Prescott, no. David Tenyon, yes. Anders Wellings, no, from Councilmember Roberts. Mayor Gaddis selected no on all three. Councilmember Bankard selected one on all three. And Councilmember Shaw selected yes for Anders Wellings and no for David Tenyon and Doug Prescott.
All right, item 16, nomination, election of Vice Mayor by ballot. Before we open this to the council, let's go to the citizens for comments. Who would like to speak? Yes.
Rita Swob, Eighth Street, Bellard Beach, Florida. I would like to encourage this council to nominate Councilmember Lloyd Roberts for Vice Mayor. I had to vote for Lloyd Roberts for Vice Mayor. He's very highly respected in this community and is definitely an asset, and that's what I hope the council does. Thank you.
Thank you. Other citizens, if you'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Jane Burgess, Fifth Street. I'd like to act out for, for myself. He is well-respected, he has expertise, he knows how to run the city, and he's fine with it.
Others? Yes.
We've got the Burgess, 111 Fifth Street. I would like to also recommend Lloyd Roberts to be voted to Vice Mayor position. He does listen to residents and brings concerns that they have to the council, and I feel that he is the best candidate to provide support to the mayor and the citizens of Bellard Beach.
Thank you. Other citizen comments? Yes? Mr. Manzo.
Joseph Manzo, this one's not even close. There's one person who works for the citizens in this, that's up for this nomination. There's one person who went and reached out to the Attorney General when the beach umbrellas and shade was taken away from all of our citizens. There's one person who busted his back and took nothing but grief when he tried to protect the citizens of this city from motorboaters and other motorized vehicles in the swim zones. He was billified. I know the feeling, but it doesn't stop him. He performs every time, he's prepared every time, we just saw it tonight. He knew the charter. Where's the rest of the people that's supposed to know the charter? Where's the rest of the people that are supposed to be reading the ordinances? There's one person who deserves to be the Vice Mayor. He has proven it time and time again. The big law firm has the thing for the people, there's one person for the people here. Frank Bankard is that person. And you know what? Your vote for Frank Bankard says a lot about you, not about Frank. Because those of us who know what Frank does for the people, we know that he's a fighter. And whether he's Vice Mayor, or he's the newest council member, he's always going to be there for the citizens. I wholly endorse you, Frank, and I hope that this council does too. You would be a great Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can I just take the 121 12th Street? I've never met Frank. He clearly knows Bellard Beach, the charter, and he's a frank, outspoken, pardoned-upon person who says what he means. That's what I like. So you got my endorsement.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I strongly recommend Mr. Bankard because I've seen how he loves his job, what he's doing. With the situation of my house, he came to me in that morning, 7 o'clock in the house, and said, "I'm gonna look around and see where you live. Let me take a look on the situation." Even, he said, "Iris, I can sit here with you and draft the letter." And even, he did not stop there. He called Pinellas County, is that correct, Mr. Bankard? And tried to resolve the matter. He tried to hit the walls for me and for my family. So you deserve that position, and even better. Thank you for what you do. I appreciate that. God bless you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, citizens' comments are closed. All right, we're gonna need a motion from the council to nominate a lay of Vice Mayor. Would someone like to do a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Bankard, you have a floor.
Yes, first of all, I really want to thank all the people at voting today, yesterday, supporting me. I believe I'm over 40 residents sending emails. I didn't know there was a write, letter-writing campaign, told my neighbor, notified the city Friday. I got a bad foot or I would have not put some words. But I love this city, all right? And I guess the mayor thinks I'm sticking it to him by not proceeding. I'm lawful. And this is, this is the whole problem. Don't read the newspapers, and I'm not gonna mention anybody's name, but there's a guy that sued, there's a guy that sued Matherick Beach because they did it wrong. Some of those lawsuits were over $150,000 in awards and damages. I caught five errors, actually six, all right, three just tonight in charter provisions that we were running by. Now, I think we should have a Vice Mayor that loves the city, not saying that Lloyd doesn't, he's a great man, all right? But someone that really wants to serve the people lawfully and wants to get into what this city and charter is all about. If you don't want the charter, I don't think you can remove it, but you need to follow it. We, we have all these ordinances, and the charter is for the council to follow like the Constitution of the United States, so, in the, in the state of Florida. I mean, I really, it doesn't, it, it, I really would like to be Vice Mayor, okay? But it's just a title, it doesn't give me any more power. But I think I deserve it, I'm a senior council member here. I volunteered 10, for 10 years at every event I've been asked for. I've never, I've been to one beach cleanup since, since the existence. I mean, sandbagging on there every year, helping the residents out, that has nothing to do with the vice mayorship. It just shows that I am in tune with the city and love the city, even though there's some people that hate me because I made alliances with some people they don't like. Well, God told me to do that, all right? So if you have a problem with that, go talk to Jesus Christ and God, all right? I am glad I made alliances with people that other people don't like. And I'm glad I can call other people, residents, friends, whatever. That is a great thing I think is accomplished, and like, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Elliott, do you have any comments?
I do. I, I want to say that I'm legalizing for Mr. Roberts, but for several reasons. One is, part of this role is to be able to assist the mayor, and I think that that would be a good working relationship there. The other side of it is that I truly appreciate, respect, and encourage Mr. Bankard's independence, his diligence, his expertise. There's no question in terms of his commitment and his, his interest in doing the right thing. I think we can preserve that independence and he can continue to be that voice that brings out the issues, and I just want to encourage that, as well as the fact that I just want to get something resolved. So that will be my vote.
Thank you for those comments. I, I will say that I was on the fence, but I was actually, I, up until today, I wouldn't have had a problem with either person being the Vice Mayor. Because I know, out of the two gentlemen who were on each side of him, I know that they're gonna go back to the city, they're gonna do what they can for the city. And then I got a copy of an email where Frank Bankard was asking for people to write in letters, and he gave all the reasons why they should support him and get behind him. And I was a little taken back with one of the citizens writing in the middle of this huge "Look at me and all I've done" paragraph, which was, "I further was able to move a change in our ordinance of the five-year look-back rule by FEMA to one year regarding cost of modification and damages to homes." What I realized was that I, I don't see Mr. Bankard as a team player. I see Mr. Bankard as someone who, it's his way or no way. And, and it's, this, this letter made it all about him, there was no team. It wasn't the council did this. It wasn't, it wasn't about what a great job this council has done in the last few years, and, and how well we've worked together. It was all about Frank. And it really, it bothers me. So unfortunately, Frank, after reading this, I, I will not be able to support you. I realize we're not, we're not gonna reach unanimous vote. And, and I respect everything that you do, except for your, your packets of dealing with this council.
Well, I'm sorry, but I've been researching the ordinances and charter, and I can't find the word "team" in. We voted, we voted for seven people when I got up, okay? Individual thoughts? And damn me for having an individual thought, okay? If you want a team, let's reduce it to just a kingdom, all right? And then you can just get everything passed, okay? But yes, I did get counsel, and like I said, to the person, to move on that one-year setback. And we were, we were going to wait until probably October, November, when it finally gets passed, and I brought up at the last meeting, it's on the audio that I did this.
But we know exactly what you did, and, and that's fine, I agree with you on it. However, it's, you have led everyone in this to believe that every one of these accomplishments on here is all about you.
Tell me which one isn't. I wrote the, no, I wrote the letter, I know it.
The truth is, the one that, that also, you didn't know that there was an email campaign going on, and right there it is.
I said, I thanked my neighbor for informing me there was gonna be an email campaign Friday night. I got an email from the city clerk, I sent an email out Saturday.
Okay, all right. Well.
And I think that, I think the email clearly says, there were 40 to, what, seven or eight? I mean, but hey, don't do what the voters want, do what you want, Dave.
That's right.
Yeah, and I'm gonna do what the voters want.
Okay.
We're gonna put that, put that.
Okay. Do we have any other comments on the council?
I, I appreciate the support that I got earlier tonight. I, for one, never sent an email to anyone. So I really feel good about the fact that people were writing to the city unsolicited. So thank you to whoever did those, I appreciate it. As the mayor said, he feels comfortable that both of us have the skill sets, the knowledge, the capability to do this job. I, I know I can, and would love to have the opportunity. But who was, and I wasn't gonna really delve into this email, because I got the same email as the mayor did, but the final sentence is the one that made me very not happy, which said that he was the only council member that did not say that we view this as a thankless job. I have never said that in my life, nor would I ever. But the most important thing that I feel the best about regarding what I was able to achieve here at the city was the fact that when I was elected, and I, I just kind of wondered why in our meeting that we did not open the meeting with a prayer of invocation. And when I brought it up, other people supported it, Frank supported it, but that, that just needed to happen. Because when we have these meetings, I'm, I'm confident that when we open it with a prayer, he's listening, and he's happy that we're involving him in this meeting, and we're asking for his help and direction. So that was a huge thing, and it makes me feel fulfilled that we were able to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Nope? All right, let's take it to a vote.
Councilmember Elliott, would you like to record your vote for the record?
Mr. Roberts.
Councilmember Bankard, voted for Bankard. Mayor Gaddis voted for Roberts. And Councilmember Roberts voted for Roberts.
Thank you. All right, so we're obviously not getting anywhere on this. I would say that we need to add this agenda item to the 22nd's meeting also. Mr. Mora, are you, are you sure that the data will have been transmitted from our election results?
We'll make every effort to see that that is done. If there's any reason that can't be done in that timeline, we will make that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now we'll move over to item 17. Selecting councilmen for voting alternates on the big seat. All right, council, I need a motion to select the voting alternates for the Big C. Would someone like to?
Second.
All right. Elliott, and would someone like to second that?
Second.
Second by Roberts.
So we're the two, right?
Uh, yes, but right now, I'm gonna give Elliott the floor, and then we'll, we'll work this out. Miss Elliott?
Are we, are we looking for nominations at this time?
Oh, we're doing, you know what, this is not quite as serious as a vote, we need two delegates for the Big C, I'm just looking for nominations at this point.
I could really be happy to serve in that capacity, I, I, I am very much interested in beach community-related issues and, and that organization is at the forefront, so I would, I would love to have that opportunity to serve.
All right, we have a nomination for Kim Shaw Elliott, second. What's that, second? He seconded that one? All right, that's one. Do we have a nomination for the second, Elliott?
I would not make myself.
All right, Roberts. Anyone like to second that one?
Second.
Second by Bankard. So we have a standing motion right now for Elliott and Roberts, I think we can just do this with all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and so Elliott was first, Roberts was second. Am I good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was easy. Number eighteen, consideration of reappointment of citizens advisory committee members. Ron Siginnick, Mark Golden, John Hansick, Robert Reesberg, and Thomas Elliott, and appointment of Tammy Lavenda as an alternate member. Let's go to the citizens for comments, anyone like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are closed. Before we continue, I'm gonna need a motion from the council.
Motion.
Reappoint, we'll go ahead and finish the statement, and then I'll give you the motion. Reappoint, appoint to the citizens advisory committee, based on staff recommendations, the motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Bankard, you have the floor. As written to the record, I ask for a motion to move. All right. Any, anyone else like to comment on this before we vote? All right, let's just do a, real quick, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, we're good there. And I appreciate all who stepped back up to serve another term, and also, Ms. Lavenda, congratulations. Number nineteen, consideration of reappointment of parks and, you know, why do we call it park? You know, there's more than one, why do we always call it that? Uh, reappointment of Park and Recreation Board member, John Wagner. Let's go to the citizens for comments. No comments? Citizen comments are closed. I'm gonna need a motion from the council to reappoint John Wagner to be Park and Recreation Board based on staff recommendations.
Motion.
Motion. Frank Bankard, second by Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And congratulations, and thank you again for stepping up, Mr. Wagner. Number twenty, consideration of reappointment of Planning and Zoning Board members, Angela Berry and Brenda Wunisara. Let's go to the citizens for comments. All right, citizen comments are closed. Need a motion from the council to reappoint Angela Berry and Brenda Wunisara to be Planning and Zoning Board based on staff recommendations.
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Bankard, second by Elliott. Mr. Bankard, would you like to speak on this? As proposed, as written to the record, I would like to bring it to a vote. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Berry and Ms. Wunisara, for your continued service across the city. Number twenty-one, consideration of reappointment of Board of Adjustments members, Mike Kelly, Jane Mason, Goldman, David Gardella, Mark Bean, and alternate member Gerald Wiswati. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Citizen comments are closed. I need a motion to reappoint members and alternate members to the Board of Adjustments based on staff recommendations.
Motion.
Motion made by Bankard, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give this one to.
I win the delay every time.
That's very good.
I'm sorry, mayor, who did you give the second to?
I'm gonna give it to Elliott. Mr. Bankard, you have the floor.
As presented and on the record by the mayor, please move to vote.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you to all who serve on the Board of Adjustments. What would we do without you, Frank? Twenty-two, consider authorizing an amendment to piggyback agreement for consulting services related to utility, undergrounding, and approval to execute purchase order. Mr. Reifler?
Thank you, mayor. So this, this is an amendment to the piggyback agreement that we signed in September of 2022, which allowed us to piggyback the Indianized beach contract with Utility Consultants of Florida at the pricing that they submitted in rocks. UCF is the abbreviation, so UCF has done our conduit for Duke Energy in Phase One, and they're also charged to do the conduit installation for Phase Two. This, they've volunteered to give us a price after seeing the binding cost agreement from Spectrum to do the, which would be North of Cozart Boulevard, East Side of Gulf Boulevard was the remaining segment of Spectrum Communication that needs to be undergrounded, they came in, Spectrum offered to do it with their subcontractors for about ninety thousand, and UCF came in below that, but in order to honor the very great pricing that they provided, we had to do an amendment to the, to the piggyback agreement. The benefit to them though is, they're already out there, they're already mobilized, they are doing the conduit for Duke Energy already, so, so then they, they feel that, you know, they've worked with the city for a long time, and also it works to their benefit to make sure that no other subcontractors out there installing a conduit that could possibly hit their Duke Energy conduit. So, this is just an amendment to that agreement, which again allows us to use the pricing, and then the following agenda item is the actual Spectrum approval for, once UCF puts the conduit in there around, and then the remaining price is first by going along their wires and connect them all, which UCF can't do, but the utility companies do that. So, if I included the original piggyback agreement and then the estimate for installation from Spectrum, or the, or the estimate from UCF and for your review, and then the amendment was drafted by our city attorney.
Thank you. Let's go to the citizens for comment, would anyone like to speak on this topic? Nope, citizen comments are closed. I need a motion from the council to authorize the city manager to amend the piggyback agreement and to execute the purchase order.
So, a.
Motion made by Lloyd Roberts, second, second by Frank Bankard. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously a significant cost savings, to me it's a no-brainer, let's vote.
Councilmember Elliott?
Um, I could use a little more information, so, we know that Spectrum bid ninety thousand, then the UCF came in at sixteen hundred dollars less than that, so I understand those numbers. The total request is for almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so, explain to me what the difference is.
Are you looking at, which item are you looking at? Because if you look at the first item that we were just discussing, yeah, they came in below what Spectrum's subcontractors quoted, so the piece that UCF would be doing would be that eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
And then, the remainder, so the next item, that, that is the remainder of the cost, so, um, so as opposed to paying Spectrum, which I believe their, a writ for their quote to install and wire was two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-five, so it's ninety, ninety thousand even, so, we still, that second agenda item is just the remainder of the cost to actually wire once the conduit's installed.
Is this the project that we received a grant for?
We get reimbursement from Penny for Fennell's, so it's not exactly a grant, but it's dedicated funds.
And it was dedicated for beautification projects, so?
Yes, long gone already.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. All right, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Miss Elliott, I didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Mr. Reifler, you may proceed. Thank you, mayor. All right, number twenty-three, consider authorizing the execution of a purchase order with Charter Communications. Mr. Reifler, I think you just covered this, but.
This is just per our purchasing requirements, you know, over a certain amount, needs to be approved by city council, this is a, a purchase order that only Charter Communications can actually offer for this service, so it's just the official approval to execute the purchase order, get the, the wiring done.
All right, thank you very much. Citizens, anyone like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are closed. I need a motion from the council to authorize city manager to execute this purchase order. Is that moved? Second, Roberts and Bankard, Mr. Roberts, comments?
Is this Mark?
Mark orders with the Utility Consultants of Florida.
Right.
And then Spectrum Communication, I'm just dropping his name right now, but yeah, um, this is to finish up their job.
Right.
And those are going on the east side.
I had met with them before, very skilled, understands what we need to do, was Ron supporting.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to mention, also, when we did the South of Cozart Boulevard section, and we used the Spectrum subcontractors, we did end up in a lot of delay, things left open for a very long time.
We're awful.
Cause of submission, cause of submission, so that's.
Wires and land recommendations, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Elliott, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
All right, let's take it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes, Mr. Reifler. Twenty-four unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business? All right, seeing as we have unfinished business, let's go to council comments. I'm gonna start off with Councilmember Bankard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I was accused of not being a team member, guilty as charged. I played junior hockey in Canada in my youth, along with baseball, thirteen sports. I further served administrations of business, the word "team" can resonate there too. Team, again, I don't see it in our charter, ordinances, actually, I don't even see it in the Constitution of the United States or Florida. More importantly, we all ran here non-party, we don't even have a party to associate ourselves with. Where the hell is team driven in this city? So I will vote my conscience going forward, as I've done in the past, and I will do the best of my ability to follow the laws of this city and our charter, but more importantly, the oath I took office tonight, I will follow to the letter of the law, and just for the record, I didn't say anything about honoring a team under my oath. Thank you.
Let's go to Councilmember Roberts.
Yes, sir. I think teamwork is very, very important, I don't think it necessarily has to be written anywhere, it's an understood benefit to the city, and we should always try to work in that format. A little while ago, when we were still in this four-person council, we, we were confronted with a challenge that, I really felt for our mayor, because I know this isn't something that he wanted to do, but at that time, it was really the only way to move things forward. And we actually negotiated, for lack of a better term. In the world we live in, we should never be negotiating, we should be voting, just like Frank was saying, you vote your heart, you vote your mind, and we move forward. I, I know there were citizens in our city that expressed concern over that, and I'm confident that once we get our council set with whatever the correct number is, I don't believe we'll ever be confronted with that situation again, and that will be a wonderful time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Councilmember Elliott?
I would just say briefly that we are in tune in the sense that we're all equally committed to pursuing the best interests of this community, acting as fiduciaries to work on behalf of our citizens, and at the same time, we are independent in the sense that we do have a responsibility to vote our own voice, and I respect Mr. Bankard's independence and pursuit of what he believes to be right.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Now I'm calling vice mayor, oh yeah, we don't have one, so, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out and making it through this, I know it was painful tonight, and I apologize. Hopefully we'll get some things resolved on the twenty-second, whenever our charter is officially changed. Till then, we'll see you on the twenty-second, do I have a motion to adjourn? How about a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, bye everyone.
Bye now.
Yeah.
All right, Frank. Maybe in twenty-six, around there.
I'll see you on, 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 on,